Good evening. Apologies for the two-minute delay. We appreciate everyone's patience. I would ask that our village clerk, Menal Desai, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to start the meeting this evening. Please stand as you are able.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting to order, and I again ask that our village clerk, Menal Desai, please call the roll. Trustee Pierce Logan?
Here.
Trustee Schechter?
Here.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Here.
Trustee Robinson?
Here.
Trustee Iverson?
Here.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Here.
Mayor Tennis? I am here, and we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, I would ask for a motion for approval. Trustee Iverson, I saw you with a motion, and Trustee Lissa Levy with a second. Any comments? Will the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Logan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Thank you, and the motion passes. I would like to pause for a moment and ask if any of the individuals, and I'm looking, and I'm looking for Mr. DeCalo or Ms. Schuman. Ms. Schuman, thank you. If you'd kindly stand. So Commissioner Valerie Schuman from the board, and Mr. DeCalo was walking in right on cue. Ms. Schuman is a long-serving member of our village's Beautification Improvement Commission, and tonight she was appointed chair, so thank you. And Mr. DeCalo, who just came in, if you'd kindly stand. Mr. DeCalo was just appointed to our Public Safety Commission, so thank you. And just to check in, are any of the other individuals who were appointed this evening present? I didn't think any of them were coming, but wanted to check. So with the four appointments that were made this evening, not counting Ms. Schuman's promotion, if you will, but Mr. DeCalo and the other three knew, one actually is a commissioner who had long served on another commission and is actually coming back to serve on a different commission. But with those four appointments made this evening, just now, this board has appointed a total of 47 residents to advisory boards and commissions since August. This number does not include the various reappointments that we've made to the boards and commissions. So in total, this, what I'm calling the Class of 2025, represents 919 years and five months of residency in Skokie. The range is 75 years of residency to two months. One individual who was appointed to a commission last, last meeting had only lived in Skokie for two months when they applied to serve. I'd like to thank all of our community's newest advisory boards and commission members, and I'd like to thank my colleagues for assisting and helping in this process. We will continue to interview prospective commissioners each month, so thank you. Thanks to the commission, and thank you to those who are joining our ranks to serve our community in these volunteer capacities. So with that said, the next item on our agenda is we are recognizing the month of December as Niles Township Food Pantry Awareness Month, and Trustee Iverson, I believe, let me check, is trustee, Niles Township trustee Marie Benjamin, I see, I see you, yes, okay. Trustee Iverson is going to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Tennis. I'm very happy to read this. Whereas the Niles Township Food Pantry initially started out in the basement of the Niles Township Building at 5255 Lincoln in Skokie with a shelf containing some canned goods, just in case someone was in need. It then grew to the back room of the township's building with one full-time employee, and whereas in 2009, Niles Township reestablished the food pantry in their Annex Building at 8341 Lockwood, the former site of a daycare facility, and whereas in 2024, the food pantry served more than 72,800 individuals and some 3,300 separate households, more than 8% of total households in Niles Township, as many families rely on the pantry on a regular basis. In 2024, the pantry distributed nearly 1.4 million pounds of food, where about half of all households in the coverage area use food stamps. And whereas, there continues to be a profound demand for emergency food due to multiple factors. And the demand to operate food banks like the Niles Township Food Pantry is more critical than ever. And whereas, the pantry continues to provide meaningful volunteer service and in pantry shopping to those who are food insecure, and whereas the Niles Township Food Pantry Foundation is collecting monetary donations this year to purchase holiday gift cards so children from families in need can enjoy the upcoming holidays. In 2024, 1,000 children were able to receive a gift because of this drive. And whereas, the food pantry is run and supported by the Niles Township Government, and whereas food and other services provided to food pantry clients are paid for out of the Niles Township Food Pantry Foundation, a 501(c)(3) charitable corporation. Now therefore, I, Mayor Antennis, mayor of the Village of Skokie, do hereby proclaim the month of December 2025 as Niles Township Food Pantry Awareness Month in the Village of Skokie, and urge all residents to support the efforts of the Niles Township Food Pantry Foundation by making a monetary donation to the Food Pantry Holiday Gift Card Drive and by donating whenever possible toiletry items and non-perishable food goods.
Thank you, Trustee Iverson. Trustee, Niles Township trustee Marie Benjamin, would you please meet us at the podium? Trustee Iverson, please join me.
I just want to say thank you for issuing this proclamation and affirming what I believe that dignity starts with a full plate. Thank you.
It's important, we talked at the last meeting about how there's so much need in the community, and anything that we can do to uplift the Niles Township Food Pantry and other nonprofits in the community during this time of giving is always a good thing, as we are, as we are fortunate and able. The next item on the agenda is presentation, oh, we look forward to this, presentation of the Business of the Year Awards by our Consumer Affairs Commission, represented by Chairperson Bijanu Krishnan. And Mr. Chair, if you'd like to stand up, and I know you will interview, you will introduce other, or ask other commissioners to stand if they are here. So the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, the Honorable Mayor of Skokie, Antennis, village clerk, Menal Desai, and our distinguished village board members, and my buddies and everybody's Nick and John. Thank you so much for seeing this today. The Business of Year is a very challenging task for us every, every year. The award is because it's make it so special. Why is it so make it so special? Because it's coming straight from the Skokie residents and Skokie public. The, each individual, the nominees are picked, handpicked by the customers and the resident of the Skokie, so that is make it so special because it's not just coming, commissions are sitting out and ordering a simple business. I want to say a special thank to our staff, Lisa and Carol, doing all the administrative work for us, while we getting all the nomination, going through it, sending us the emails, and putting all the report together, and, you know, packing up everything. Thank you, Carol. We really appreciate it. And now, I don't want to prolong too much, so I'm going to, my honor to present the 2025 Business of the Year recognition. We're going to start with the honorable mention. Each year, we're going to have three honorable mentions, and this year also, we have the three honorable mentions. So I'm going to start with the honorable mentions first. The first one I would like to mention, the honorable mention is the marketplace, where it's a vibrant celebration of flavor, culture, and community. Congratulations to Marketplace on Skokie. If it's anybody from Marketplace of Skokie, please stand up and acknowledge.
Let's give them a round of applause regardless.
The second honorable mention is the Orange Pediatric Therapy. It's a very special business, a space where childrens grow, thrive, and reach new milestones. Congratulations to Orange Pediatric Therapy. The last, the third one, the final honorable mention is Don Julio Cafe.
Stand up. Madeline, Madeline Beatrice, please stand.
This is a place that every dish, every memorable tells them a story. Congratulations. Thank you so much. And finally, it's a time for the big winner, the Business of the Year Award. If you want to know, a place where moment became meanings and wellness became lifestyle. And it is a great honor to announce the 2025 Business of the Year goes to F.L. X. Move. Yes, I would kindly request the mayor to come forward to present the certificate and the awards. And I will also invite my fellow commissioner members, George and Ashley. Please come forward.
Can we ask the members that are here to come forward too? Is that, can we put it behind you?
So what I would suggest is we'll do a couple quick pictures with just us. We'll take a recess, we'll go out in the hall, and that's where we can take the big group picture. This is as close as I'll ever get to a U.S. Open trophy. Do we have the right side out? Yes. Okay, we're good. Is there anyone else? We'll, we'll hold the pose.
Can you guys take a picture from the, from here or somewhere?
There are many people.
Got a photo bomb, okay.
How can y'all shake for Instagram?
Thank you.
Congratulations. No, you're so sneaky.
We'll, we'll put this here for now. Mr. Chair? Would, Andrew, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Medcap would like to.
Yeah, please, just briefly, if you would. Okay. So my name is Andrea Medcap, and two years ago, I moved to Skokie. I never bad like this cry. But I saw an opportunity to bring something with movement to the community, and everyone just showed up. They all just started showing up, and we have so much fun, even though we're working out and sweating together, that the community not only lives within those walls of the two places, 5117 Brown Street and 5039 Oakton, but outside of the community with caroling and music and Pilates in the park, and so I am so honored to be able to serve you and for this award. My kids showed up even today, so, and they don't work out there very often. So I just want to thank you, Anne and the commission, and especially Carol White, for building this community in the last two years to 20-some new businesses that I know of, and there's so many more, Carol. So thank you for everything that you've done to help build this community that I live in and I'm so proud to be part of. Thank you.
All right, the excitement is not over yet, so we have one more award to go. Don Julio, the members of Don Julio, please come forward.
Hi, guys. My name is Victoria, and my sister Beatrice, and our chef Mike. We are so blessed to be here this night. I'm sorry. And I think about this. This has been a great challenge for our family, our first experience in business. All we do, we do it with love, but we are blessed to have this community. They always appreciate everything we do. Everything is paid with love, with care. Thank you so much for taking the time and voting with us and think about us. I don't have too much words. I'm so nervous. I'm going to give Beatrice one second so she can express. She been with me, as you guys see, my first language is Spanish. I'm an immigrant for 15 years here, and she came at 11, so her English is thousand times better. She handled my emails and pushing me front when I don't have more energy, and my chef, they do magic in the kitchen to keep nice food and healthy food for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys, for all your appreciation and for being so welcoming as a community to our family and our little Don Julio's family, and just bringing in all those beautiful moments that we've created together as a community. This year has really taught me, from my restaurant experience, that we all need each other, and it's just like this beautiful community that we have, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Beatrice.
Thank you, everybody. Once again, thank you for everybody coming in and joining this wonderful event.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the, you and the rest of the members of the Consumer Affairs Commission. Before we do take about a seven-minute recess, I'd like to just, again, congratulate all of our winners. Don Julio Cafe, best avocado toast in town. I'm just saying. And I eat a vegan diet, so they, they know they just put greens on top of it for me, which is awesome. And Andrea, I've been a deadbeat member for about three months, what with the broken wrist, but I will be back. I will be back. So, but truly, thank you to all our winners. Congratulations, but thank you for investing in our community. Small businesses are indeed the lifeblood of our community, and we are grateful to you, and we only want to see you thrive and succeed. Thank you to our community members. And we only want to see you thrive and succeed. And thank you to our community members. Look at this, for our community members for coming out to support. We see Sarah Jane from C. Jane Sparkle, again, another great example, she and Andrea. Her lease was up, she had to find a new spot, so she's partnering with Andrea and is going to be using some of the space on Brown Street. So, you know, again, thank you both for, for that innovative partnership. And thanks to our staff who do the hard work as well. So with that said, thanks again to everyone, and congratulations. We will reconvene at precisely eight o'clock. We'll, we convene in about one minute. Chairman Luke, if you would be kind enough to shut the door, thank you. Okay, we are reconvened at eight o'clock. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This public comment period and the one at the end of the meeting are for addressing the board in regard to items that are not part of this evening's agenda. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and we will allocate up to 30 minutes, so that provides time for 10 speakers. Please note that this is an opportunity to address the board. We will listen certainly attentively, but we will not respond. If there's follow-up, we might ask you to give your information to our village, our deputy village clerk, Ms. Sylvia Luke. Please note that speakers who comment, choose to make a comment during this session period will, will not be able to speak at the second open comment session. So who would like to address the village board? Mr. Shaw.
Good evening. Skokie does not protect residents. My family has faced illegal obstruction, unauthorized entries, retaliation, repeated safety hazards, with no enforcement or accountability. Others here tonight have faced similar neglect. Residents ask for help and leave discouraged because leadership protects developers, insiders, not families. When known dangers are ignored toward responsibility and no effort is made to fix the harm done to residents, the entire community becomes unsafe. Skokie deserves better. Skokie deserves better than toxic fumes around daycare children, ignored warnings, poor planning, the unfinished hotel skeleton, empty downtown stores, water main failures, and the departments that treat residents like they're inconvenienced. This community deserves leadership that enforces laws equally, puts residents first, listens rather than intimidates, and corrects harmful decisions instead of avoiding liability and accountability. And you cannot raise taxes when you cannot even provide basic services like access to homes, safety for families, and protection from clear hazards. Free Skokie. Free Skokie from free, from this community that is controlled by an unelected administrator controlling decisions that affect our safety, access, future, basic rights, retroactively approving unsafe work, blocking access, withholding subpoena records, unruling, overruling departments, and preventing enforcement. Free Skokie means restoring oversight to the elected board, restoring democracy and transparency, and ending a structure with, where bad actors influence outcomes and accountability is avoided. A system that rushes to protect its own mistakes but makes no effort to help the residents harmed by those decisions cannot serve this community. Our government should serve the whole community, use basic common sense, and never allow one unreasonable person to control everything. Skokie is not supposed to be a dictatorship. We need leadership that serves the people.
Mr. Shaw, your time is concluded. Mr. Dalka.
Okay, I thought you were running it before I stood. I want to see if this works. Let's play with it. Okay, on, actually, hang on. Now I'm ready to start. I'm ready to start now. I was adjusting this because it was adjusted for the trophy.
Nick, please restart it in the future. You're going to have five seconds to get yourself organized.
You're going to let me have time when you disrupt that.
Thank you. You'll have, you'll have five seconds.
You rude woman, resign.
We have, you'll have five seconds. Now start.
Once again, the village of Skokie is failing to provide services. On, on Saturday, November 29th, we had a foot of snow. The 9,300 block of Laurel did not receive a snowplow on the day it received a foot of snow. For the first time in my entire life, not, not a single snowplow showed up down our street. And Nick Wyatt can look the other way all he wants, but you're responsible, sir. You, you are endangering the lives of my elderly parents by not providing basic services. Whether it's for rat protection, whether it's for snow protection, whether it's for these other things, you guys continue to not do these jobs, and the, all the department's heads deserve better village management. I brought two stockings this time because we need two new village managers. The, I met with Max after the meeting last time. We had a very cordial, pleasant meeting while you guys were in there discussing your long list of lawsuits caused by this village management team. And we, for the past two weeks, nothing's happened with that list. Max agreed that everything I was asking for was reasonable. That list is available from Max. Mr. Iverson and Mr. Robinson have asked for that list, haven't received it for two weeks. I don't know why. But, you know, I think I know why. It's because every single department head in this village is not allowed to do their job by this management team. They're told to deny services. They're told to ignore our requests. They're told to not, they're told to give certain people services, such as the fact that both of them live at addresses with fiber internet, but we don't? You could have, you, when I asked you guys about this in 2018, you could have permitted the whole city as a, as a condition of giving them that permit to say every resident deserves fiber internet. And you know what? They do. I still have yet to see a plan for fiber internet for every single person there. I've asked for numerous votes this year. I've asked for a vote on a fourth ambulance on the agenda. It's still not on the agenda. I've asked for Elk Grove's very successful e-bike ordinance to be adopted and voted on without wasting hundreds of thousands of dollars on legal bills. I've asked for Rockford's garage door ordinance to be implemented fully. I asked that all of those requests, including a commission on the, report on the fiber internet for the rest of the village that doesn't have it, which Mr. Iverson's been working on, and I thank him for that. I want to acknowledge some positive there. That's there. But ladies, I need your help. We need better service. We need services across the board. We need the help of this village management team, and if they're not going to do it, we need a different village management team.
Thank you, Mr. Dalka. Is there anyone else who would like to address the village board? If not, we will close public comment period. I'm going to make a comment.
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, I'm so sorry. Please come forward.
Hi, I am a resident 57 years.
Your name, please.
And.
Your name.
Rose Metcha, like I'm glad I met you.
Thank you.
And in sales. And, you know, it was a real shocker this weekend with the snowstorm. And I understand that it's a usual heavy fall of snow, along with the leaf pickup that happened. But what I saw that really shocked me was a wall of leaves over three feet tall, 20 feet long. It was huge, mounds everywhere. You can, when you leave tonight, exit out the back of the village hall, make a right-down gallets, go to the dead end long, you'll, you'll see what I'm talking about. Still there. And what they did yesterday was they plowed a three-foot wall with, with being five feet wide, 20 feet long, in front of one of our neighbors on gallets, who's an older woman who lives there, elderly woman who lives there. Literally, it was ice and leaves, snow blocked her entire driveway, entire front. There's no way she could have exited. There's no way an ambulance could have gotten there. There's no way a paramedic could have climbed over that hill of leaves, ice, and snow. So I have to ask myself, who's the driver? And where was his brain at that moment when he decided to plow that in front of somebody's driveway, entranceway to their home and walkway? I drove to the police station, the Skokie Police Station, and immediately asked, I know they had a special number to get ahold of somebody. But I have to say, the police officer helped me, got me a phone number to call, and I reported it. They did come out and spread that away so an ambulance, paramedic, somebody could get in there and help that woman if need be. But my question is, you know, I understand that bad things happen, like bad weather, and we are very blessed to be able to have things happen immediately in our town. But where was the brain of the plow driver that doesn't register that that's a driveway and it's okay for them to put more than 20 feet of a mound, three feet tall, huge width of snow, ice, and leaves in, in front of a driveway? Where is the brain cells? I've got a bunch of heart conditions and I'm falling apart. I'm decomposing before my eyes.
And I'm so sorry, but your time is up. Would you be kind enough to give your information to our deputy village clerk, Ms. Luke? Someone will follow up with you, either the village manager or the public works director. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I vote for?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the? Is there anyone else who would like to address the village board at this time? Please raise your hand and step forward. Otherwise, we will close public comment, period. Trustee Lissa Levy.
Mr. Dahlka, I have listened to you at every board meeting that I have attended. I've listened with great interest and with a lot of empathy for your situation. However, this is a civil, this is a respectful party, and I cannot sit here and tolerate listening to your call.
You're a disobedient person, ma'am.
Mr. Dahlka, enough. I cannot tolerate you disparaging the women on this board. The way that you, the way that you address us is unacceptable. This is Mayor Tennis. This is trustee Kimani Levy. This is trustee Schechter. This is trustee Pierce Slobin. This is Clerk DeSai. I'm trustee Lissa Levy, and that's how I expect to hear from you in the future.
You have 18 minutes. How can you find it?
Thank you, trustee Levy. I would also like to call out the misogyny that has been present in this room from Mr. Dahlka. I also have had enough of it. I second what trustee Lissa Levy said. You will address me and the rest of this board in your comments commensurate with the offices to which we have been elected. We listen to you. You are, that is how it's going to happen from now on. Period. Done. I also, I also.
You're a liar.
I also would like to commend our village staff. I have the utmost confidence in our village manager, John Lockerbie. He serves this community with excellence. He serves this community with professionalism, and he has done so since he walked in the door in May of 2024, or 2004. I also have the utmost confidence in our assistant village manager, Mr. Nick Wyatt, who has risen up the ranks in this organization and who also serves this community with excellence and professionalism. Not every resident is always, always going to agree with their answers and what they can and cannot do. But I have the utmost confidence in our staff. It is always a prerogative of the community to get up and to say what's on their mind. But I cannot let the comments tonight go unaddressed. Thank you.
I hope you fix the problem finally.
We have heard all we're going to hear from you tonight. Thank you. With no other public comments, next is the report of the village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, Mayor Tennis and trustees, and good evening, everyone. Item A is regarding the recommendation to include self-selecting properties in the lead service line replacement program. Just so we're all on the same page, this is the pipe between buildings or homes and the village's water infrastructure. The village's lead service line replacement program caps private property owners' costs for the private side replacement at $3,090, and that's adjustable as costs rise. And the village also allows homeowners to finance this cost over 15 years at very low interest through their water bill. After sending letters in September to property owners within the community that have lead, galvanized, or unknown service line types, there were approximately 50 addresses, 50 individuals interested in having their lines replaced if some form of assistance from the village becomes available. A recent survey conducted of comparable neighboring communities also indicated that the majority of communities subsidize the private side replacement cost to some extent. The current budget includes a five-year plan for the water fund, under which, beginning in fiscal year '27, which is this upcoming budget, which will start May 1st, the village is scheduled to ramp up the number of lead service replacements to 688 per year from the current 140. This 688 complies with the mandated replacement schedule. Due to the relatively low demand gauge since the September letters, staff recommends revising the existing program to include self-selecting residential property owners in the annual replacement schedule, up to the total of 688 planned and budgeted replacements. This will be effective with the next year's budget, starting May 1. I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request board approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Yes, by trustee Lissa Levy. Is there a second? Trustee Ellison Pierce Slobin. I would like to commend the village manager for this. This was something that we talked about as a board when we heard the presentation several months ago. It was after that letter went out to the community. And I asked the village manager if he and our finance director, Julian Prendy, could look into finding funds that residents, so that we weren't restricted to just replacing lead lines along construction routes, that if there were residents in other areas of the community with small children or with other, for other reasons, were interested in having their lead service lines replaced, that we would be able to provide them with an equal measure of subsidy. So I commend the village manager and our finance director, Julian Prendy, for developing this program and for doing it in relatively short order. Other questions, comments? Trustee Schechter.
Yeah, I agree. This is a great idea and comes directly from what people have asked for. My question is, how are we going to let people know? I mean, we have 50 on our list now. I'm sure, you know, people would be very eager to get on the list.
If the board approves it this evening, tomorrow's scoop, we'll talk about if the village board approve this program, and then we will develop more detailed information, and we'll start pushing that out. We will be cognizant that it's effective May 1, so we have to be careful about setting expectations, but we'll start the communications if it's approved tomorrow.
Other comments or questions? Trustee Iverson.
Quick question. I agree. I think it's a fantastic solution, and it's working within the budget, which is also fantastic. If, if the number should exceed 688, then they'll go on the list for the following year.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Again, this is an unfunded mandate that we're facing, and the timeline is ratcheting up the amount of investment that we need to make. So I think that also needs to be part of this discussion. Finance director?
Yes. The 688 number is being imposed on the village by the various regulatory agencies at the federal and state level, so that's the number we are required to do to keep up with the, you know, number of years to get them all done. The funding of this is on us. We're supposed to find the money. Our plan is to look at internal crews to do most of these replacements, which also afford us the ability to, to schedule the work and incorporate the self-selects. So as we go through the budget discussion, we do have a funding plan, preliminary funding plan, and the fiscal '26 plan that you all saw. But as we go through the fiscal '27 budget, we'll talk more in detail as to how we fund these. The idea is more than 688. We're all in for it to the next year. But first and foremost, we'll address the self-selects and the water main projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Slobin?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
That completes my report this evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a report of our corporation counsel by Barbara Mangler.
Good evening, mayor and trustees. Julian, you shouldn't have walked away so fast. I don't know what you were thinking. Items A and B on my agenda are up for second reading and adoption. The first reading was on November 17th, 2025. Item A is an ordinance that is necessary for establishing the 2025 Cook County property tax levy and giving formal notice to the Cook County clerk of the aggregate amount of property taxes to be levied from Skokie Properties. The village's property tax levy has been frozen since 1990 in the amount of $15,456, There's a reason I didn't go into accounting. This will be increased by $749,649.71 to $16,206,345. This amount includes the amounts necessary for the repayment of debt and excluding any special service areas. In addition, this ordinance includes $3,262 levied for SSA Number 10 improvements and $13,092,965 levied by the Skokie Public Library to fund operations and capital during the fiscal year 2025. Item B, again, this is up for second reading. The first reading was on November 17th. This ordinance will reduce the total amount of property tax levied by the Cook County clerk, by Cook County, on the village's behalf for the 2025 tax year. The village has five outstanding debt issues, specifically the 2013 A series, 2016 A series, 2018 A series, 2019 A series, and 2022 A and B series. For each debt issue, the village has previously filed ordinance with Cook County directing the county to collect an amount sufficient to cover the principal and annual interest for each series, a total of, oh, Lord, $17,611,876.36 is authorized by bond ordinances for the 2025 tax year. This includes a library debt. In order to allow for the limited increase of the tax levy, it is necessary to abate The abatement ordinance serves as the formal action by the mayor and board of trustees to direct the county of Cook not to collect this amount. And to summarize all this in more detailed language is our finance director, Julian Prendy.
Thanks, Barb. This presentation for you tonight is an abbreviated version of what you saw last board meeting, just as a refresher, and then for the members in the audience who were not able to attend. I'm going to move through this a bit quicker, so please stop me if there's any questions, but certainly at the very end, we can allot time. Again, for the benefit of the audience, more than anything, the process of levying taxes and property taxes in Cook County is fairly complex. It involves taxing bodies like the village and the library and the school districts, setting levy amounts by ordinance. Those levy amounts are determined by budgetary needs and then formalized in an ordinance, which is what we're doing tonight. Concurrently, the county maintains the assessment process. The county assessor specifically values every property within Cook County, and I think we mentioned last, last time, about 1.9 million in properties and 80-some billion in assessed value. Property taxes are determined by two factors. One is the levy amount, the collective levy amounts of all taxing bodies, and then the second is the assessed value, the taxable base. They're essentially the top and bottom of an equation, the numerator and the denominator. Total levies are established by ordinance. Total tax base is determined by the county through the assessed value. The equalized assessed valuation is what ends up showing up in property taxes, and that is a number that is corrected by the Illinois Department of Revenue to make Cook County's assessment compliant with state law, pretty much. Cook County assesses at 10% for residential. State law requires about 33% or one-third, so Department of Revenue comes in and fixes that. Tax rates are calculated by the county, again, numerator by, by denominator. Each entity gets their own tax rate. The village has its own tax rate. School district do, the library does, and so on. Bills are mailed by the treasurer. Payments are made. Funds are then remitted to taxing bodies by the treasurer proportionately. You are well aware of this history, but for, for members in the audience who are not, in 1991, the board implemented a five-year property tax freeze at the 1990 level. That amount was $15,456,695. That freeze was reevaluated at that five-year mark. It was extended for an extra year, given that our finances could sustain it. Every year since that time, it has been reevaluated and extended, again, given our overall financial reality. And through the most recent, 2024 tax year, that, tax year, that marked 35 consecutive years where we have levied the same exact amount, at $15.5 million, from Skokie Properties. However, maintaining this frozen levy has meant that we've had to, again, adjust how we do things, control costs tightly, and then we've also had to look at some alternate revenue sources when necessary. On that cost controls, we have through years, and especially in 2010, as we were going through the Great Recession, implemented a 39-position hiring freeze. At the time, 10% of the workforce still in place today, and it started with 3.2 million per year savings on, on our bottom line. In 2022, we issued pension obligation bonds, which helped us reduce the total pension liability for public safety pensions by 46 million in present value at the time. We also saw 800,000 in annual pension funding since then. We entered into a joint dispatch agreement with the village of Lincolnwood. They receive dispatch services from us and in turn pay us a contract fee to subsidize the cost of personnel and equipment and the services. We merged Health and Human Services and saved administrative costs. We've consolidated positions throughout departments. In public works, we consolidated superintendents from four to two. We consolidated administrative positions in police and the manager's office. We eliminated the STAR program at the time, very ineffective, 150,000 serving just about 15 residents a year. We were able to find alternative methods for those residents that were served and saved the village 150,000 a year. And we've increased, increased employee health insurance costs. We are self-insured. We collect a portion from the employees and then pay the rest. We increased that from 12% to 15%, essentially pushing more costs to the employees just to be able to sustain the cost increases in health insurance, et cetera. On the revenue front, we've had to look at alternate sources when we've been faced with acute issues. For example, in 2010, the state of Illinois, due to their budget woes, reduced the share of income taxes that, that were being shared with municipalities through what they call the local government distributed fund. They cut the share in half from 10% of total income taxes to five, to the village, there was a $5.5 million hit. At the time, we implemented the municipal utility tax to replace that revenue exactly, and then turned around and committed that utility tax dollar for dollar to funding public safety pensions, and that's still in place today. Through the years, however, what's happened in, in the outside world, inflation or the value of the dollar has decreased. Inflation up by 109% or 2.2% annually. That buying power that, that was there in 1990 is 109% less today. EAV, or the total taxable base for the village, has increased by 210%. In the last 10 years alone, that average has been 4.85% annually. Total EAV for the village in 2024 is 3.3 billion. Had we kept up with inflation and the levy, just to essentially keep the same buying power, 2025 levy today would be almost $32.5 million, 32.3 to be precise, or 16.9 million higher than that 1990 levy. That would have meant an additional $260 million collected from Skokie Properties throughout that time. The average home today would be paying another $469 more in 2025, and 339, 1,339 for the average business. Because the village's levy has remained flat, fixed, at the same dollar amount, and because the tax base has increased, and because every other agency has increased their tax levy, what has happened is that our share in the typical property tax bill has significantly gone down. In 1990, the village made up 16% of an average property tax bill. In 2023, which is the most recent we have available detail for, the village has dropped to 5.41%. In dollars and cents, out of a average tax bill of just under $7, $7,200, only 390 go to fund village services like the police and their response time, the fire and their response time, public works, and so on. That brings us to today, and our, the tax levy that's presented before the board. As I mentioned, the levy is evaluated every year in light of our overall financial situations. Even though the tax levy today is a small portion of the village's operating funds, the majority of it goes to fund pensions and debt. In 1990, 64% of the general fund was funded by property taxes. Today, just under 2%. The majority, as I mentioned, goes to fund debt and pensions. We rely on other sources of revenue, which are very economically sensitive. 73% of the general fund is funded by economically sensitive sources like sales tax, income tax, food and beverage, real estate transfer, or building permits. These sources fluctuate and do not provide. These sources fluctuate and do not provide economic confidence on funding our operations. As we look to secure our, our funding options and be able to continue provide services without resorting to these economically sensitive sources, the property tax becomes a very valuable option. In addition, property, there are about twenty-six thousand properties that, that are included in the village's tax base. That fifteen point four million and the increased sixteen point two million is spread amongst these properties, which means for very small increases passed throughout the tax base. We have a timing issue also. This 2025 tax levy actually goes to fund fiscal 2027. These, the 2025 levy will not be onto property owners' bills until, at the earliest in, in August. Your, your first installment bills in March, if they come out in time, will not include this levy. It'll only be included in the second installment. Those funds won't be collected until sometime in October, November, which is well within the middle of our fiscal 2027. So we are presenting a levy that actually goes to fund fiscal 2027. We are in the preliminary stages of looking at fiscal 27, but we are aware of financial challenges upfront. I mentioned the structural deficit here. Through the budget process, we talked about structural deficit with the village board in, in great detail. Some information is included in our budget for those members in the audience that, that want to look it up. The, the bottom line is the pace of growth in our revenues does not meet the pace of growth in our expenditures. Our expenditures are always higher at inflation plus, whereas our revenues do not keep up with these inflationary sources. As an example, in fiscal 2026, from all existing sources, we anticipate about a million seven, one point seven million in new revenue. If we look at expenditures, just keeping up with the workforce, that is contractually mandated salaries and so on, we anticipate a one point seven million increase. So new revenue just goes to fund the personnel cost increases. In addition to personnel, we anticipate another six hundred thousand in, in health insurance increases and then four hundred thousand or so in pension cost increases and, and materials and so on. So that's another million that is unfunded straight out of the gate. That is, the structural deficit is not new to the village of Skokie. It's not new to fiscal 27 or 26. It's really not new to any municipality in, in the region or in the state. It's just built into municipal services. Costs always rise higher than what revenues are able to keep up with. I mentioned the hiring freeze as a very important tool that we used back in 2010 to control those costs. Those thirty-nine positions still maintain, uh, still maintain today. They are beginning to impact our operations across departments, be it in public safety or non-public safety. As we enter fiscal 27, we are making a recommendation that we unfreeze at least three of those positions. And we're estimating their cost to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Specifically as to which three position, we, we don't know yet. We know there's demand across departments, both in public safety and non-public safety, but that's something we will look at in more detail as we go through the budget hearing process. In addition to the hiring freeze lifting or strategic lifting, we have three firefighter positions that are currently funded by a grant, a SAFER grant, that expires at the end of the year. We are looking at renewing that grant and getting alternative funding for it. However, we are not planning on it. We are assuming this will be a, a village cost to, to fund. And that's approximately four hundred thousand in, in fiscal 27 monies that will need to be funded. All of those factors combined mean that we are recommending a levy of sixteen point two million for fiscal, for tax year 2025, a seven hundred and fifty thousand increase to address these fiscal 27 issues. However, that amount, when we work it out across the tax base, again, ends up being twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents per year per residence, or just under two dollars, a dollar seventy-eight per month for the residential portion. On the business side, commercial and industrial, it's about fifty-eight dollars per year for a commercial property and just under a hundred and thirty-eight dollars for an industrial property. I wanted to put this together so we reconcile what you see in your ordinance and, and what the sixteen point two does. So the, the ordinances tonight, two ordinances tonight. One of them levies the corporate and library portion in SSA, and the other abates a portion of the debt levy. So by ordinance tonight, we're levying four point eight million, four million eight hundred and ninety-five thousand and eighty-eight dollars for the village, thirteen million ninety-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for the library, and three thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars for SSA number ten. And just as a note, SSA number ten is a very small SSA in town. That levy is specific to those properties. It's not a general property increase or property tax across the village. So the total in your ordinance is seventeen million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and fifteen. That's what the ordinance is levy for. The levy, uh, the ordinances that are filed with the county already automatically call for the levying of sixteen point four million on the village's behalf to pay debt and one point two million on the library's behalf to pay debt. Because we are recommending a cap levy at sixteen point two million, we must take action tonight to abate, to forego a portion of that amount that's called for in those debt ordinances. And that amount is five million ninety-nine thousand three hundred and nineteen. So the total levy for the village, sixteen million two hundred and six, three hundred and forty-five dollars. For the library, fourteen million two hundred and ninety-four, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. And for SSA number ten, three thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. We don't have breakdown of the 2025 levy yet across other towns. We just know our share. We do have a breakdown of the 2024 levy, so we went back into this comparison just to see where we fall. Lot of numbers here, as I mentioned last time. The first three columns are just raw data. The second, the colorful three columns are the metrics we are looking at to comparing the village of Skokie with all these other towns. The first block is towns comparable by size to us. The second block is towns that are nearby or, or maybe of, of interest, and then Chicago at the bottom. We're looking at three metrics here. The municipal share of the average tax bill, what portion of the tax bill goes to municipality. The levy per capita, that's the, the second from the right. And then the, the rightmost column is the levy as a percent of household income. How much of the household's income are we capturing through this tax levy? Bottom line, long story short, we are the lowest of all of these communities. We are the lowest at five point forty-one municipal share, the lowest per capita, two hundred and thirty, and the lowest percent of household income at zero point forty-four percent. And beyond that, even though we are the lowest on the property tax, we have also maintained some of the lowest service costs for some of the other services we charge. For example, the water rate, we are the, one of the lowest, if not the lowest, among the comparable communities we look at. We have the lowest refuse fee from the communities around us that we compare to. Our vehicle sticker is one of the lowest, if not the lowest, again, on our comp. So we have maintained low service costs in addition to maintaining this low property tax share in our community. I'll stop there and turn it over for you, questions if there's any.
There are questions from the board. Trustee Schechter.
Thank you for this, this presentation, seeing it a second time. So I guess a question is as much maybe for Mr. Lockerbie as, as for yourself. But, you know, if we're going to break the, a thirty-five-year freeze, I think as a board, we want to be really mindful of what the, you know, the use of this seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is. I mean, we're saying three positions, but we don't know exactly which positions. Could you be maybe a little more precise? I mean, we've heard about, you know, getting another ambulance or some other things that we've said that we've needed. But I think, I think that the public would want some, some clarity. Why didn't we ask for more? Why aren't we asking for less, you know?
So this proposed levy is to sustain services that we have today. It means to provide the exact same level of services. It, it, it's not adding any services. It's not an additional ambulance. It's not anything additional. It is just for the, for the village to maintain our existing services. And so that original five-year pledge turned into thirty-five years. And so the biggest part of the village's budget is related to services. And so it's, it's employees providing services to the community. And so we can't provide the services with the existing financial resources we have. And so we have reduced the number of employees at this point at thirty-nine. And so in addition to that, we have some that are grant-funded, COVID grants, SAFER grants. Those monies are going away. And so to be able to sustain services, we have to, between now and the proposed budget in April, we have to figure out how best to be as efficient as we can and to propose a balanced budget that maintains services. I mean, the village was the first in the country to have a fully accredited police, fire, and public works departments. The fire department is ISO one, that's the best in class. These are high-level services that we have worked to maintain, and we can't do it anymore within our financial resources. And so the alternative is to reduce the services. And so it's very difficult, as we sit here on December first, to say exactly what positions will be funded through the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because we have some other financial resources that we're pursuing. And then the departments have to come together with their demand. You know, what is it that they need in order to serve the community starting May one? There is a study that's underway currently about one of our departments. In order to, for that department to serve the community, it's the Community Development Department. And so I anticipate within the next sixty days, we're going to have recommendations from that outside entity that has done this study across the country and other municipalities. And so those recommendations likely are going to require some financial resources. And so although I can't be precise with exactly how the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to be allocated, it is to sustain the village's services as they are today.
So you're saying that is the minimum? I mean, that does, it's a scientifically derived number.
And, and the finance director can assist with this. The village strives to be good financial stewards. And so, you know, the, the village's philosophy of not having a tax burden on the community, minimizing that. One strategy is in order for the visitors to our community that require services to also contribute to the level of services that our community experiences. And so the, you know, some of the revenue sources that Finance Director Prendy referred to are largely paid by people outside of our community. And so strategically, you know, the village is reliant on non-residents, non-businesses in order to fund services. But the piece of the pie that the village is relying on for property taxes, which is a very stable revenue source, is so small in the village's budget. It's all going to pensions. And so when we talk about a budget of about a hundred and fifty million dollars annually, fifteen million is currently from property taxes. And we're, you know, the, the, the big operating departments are closer to fifteen million dollars annually. So for Public Works to operate, to provide water, to provide the, the free leaf collection, unfortunately, all the leaves don't fall before the first snowflakes fall. But we do have a truck that is in the community going to homes that have extra leaves in their driveways currently. So please contact the Public Works Department if there are leaves that are problematic for people. But those level of services are not being funded by property taxes. And so the, in order for us to sustain services, there has to be an adjustment to the property tax levy. There's not another choice, or the services have to be reduced. The expenses of the village have to be reduced. And Julian has alluded to, Finance Director Prendy has alluded to some of the strategies that have been implemented. But every year, we strive to be more efficient, and we try to use technology, and we, we look for partners to provide the services in a cost-effective manner. But we don't have options anymore. For thirty-five years, we've been looking at every lever that can be adjusted, and we, we just have run out of levers to sustain the services that we have today.
Have a question.
Yes, Trustee Robinson.
So the, the last four or so years, the boards approved the construction of so many different housing options, thousands that are coming. If some of them have already been constructed. And so many businesses and the impact of Old Orchard and, you know, our shopping center. Can you speak to the impact of all the additional people, residents, and the mall? I know you spoke a little bit about it.
Sure. I think there's, there's two parts of that equation. One is that when the vacant parcel was developed with Optima, there were seven hundred-plus residences that were added. And so there's services, whether it's fire, whether it's police, whether it's Public Works, refuse collection. Those services were added, but there was no property taxes added because the levy stayed flat at fifteen point four million. So if that building generated a hundred thousand dollars, just to use a round number, in property taxes, that was absorbed into that fifteen point four million. So there's additional services that can be demanded as residents, if, as additional residents are added to the community. But the structure of the frozen tax levy doesn't capture that growth in assessed value. And so for there to be successful economic development in town, for, for Old Orchard Mall to be having the significant investment that it's having to add hundreds and hundreds of apartments over two phases, about six hundred apartments. The tax levy is not being adjusted to benefit from that increased assessed value in the community if the property tax levy remains frozen. And so as there are new housing units that are added to the community, there are some businesses that might not be there, and so there's kind of a shift between commercial and residential. But there are a lot of housing units that have been added. Johanna, Community Development Director, can, can provide this precise breakdown of that. But there has been a real interest in adding housing to the community over the last several years. And so some of that has occurred in buildings that were outdated and needed to be demolished. Some are, are commercial spaces that are no longer viable as commercial, and now they're residential. Or maybe there's a combination of commercial on the first floor, or a portion of the building and, and residences are being added. And so the, the village does have additional potential service demands as there's residential units being added to the community. Does that answer your question?
Kinda.
Yeah, I don't feel like I answered it. If you want to ask it again, I will.
Well, that's, that's, uh, I, I get it. It just, I'm trying to imagine, there's so much added to the community the last several years with the businesses and the residents. It's hard for me to understand the deficit if there's added growth in people, businesses. Doesn't that equal added growth in revenue?
So you're not talking about property taxes specifically? You're talking about all revenue sources?
Correct.
And so, absolutely. I mean, there's, sales taxes is approximately thirty-five million in revenue a year?
Approaching forty.
So our, our, just for comparison purposes, property tax levy is about fifteen and a half million, and, and the sales taxes are more than double that. And so in order to have significant growth in sales tax, it's reliant on businesses either having greater sales or us adding new businesses. And so Julian's projections for revenue has about a two percent annual increase in revenue, whereas expenditures, and so we need the sales tax just to stay even, to grow about two percent. Or local fuel tax. So at the gas pump, when we're filling up vehicles, there is a local fuel tax, five cents a gallon. And so that covers street resurfacing. But over the last few years, we were at about one point one million in annual revenue, and now we're closer to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. And so that revenue source has declined, and there's a number of reasons why that has happened. But that means that the other revenue sources have to make up for that loss. And so as we have added businesses and the, and, and the sales at Old Orchard are, are increasing with their new investment, it has to increase a certain amount just for us to stay even. And then with other revenue sources declining, we need it to grow even more. But it's very difficult for those sources to grow at a rate that matches the expenditure growth.
Have we, I'm, I'm asking a lot of, I know, a lot of questions, but I, I need to be able to have concrete answers. Hey, trustee, you voted for this, or it passed. I want to know explicitly what added value that we're getting from the cost, right? And is it a compounded cost? Because if we're talking about people or positions, it's not a one and done, correct?
There would be salary costs year after year, and, and they typically- There would be salary costs year after year and, and they typically don't go down, unfortunately.
Right. So, this would be a, a continued additional cost from here?
We, we evaluate anytime there's a, a attrition, whether it's a, for whatever reason, the, the position is vacant, we strive to look at, how can we be more efficient? How do we serve the community? And so, we don't automatically just, you know, fill the position as it was in the past. We always look to see, how can we be better, more efficient? And sometimes, the position is no longer warranted or it needs to be reconfigured or maybe it's less hours than, than what it was before. And so, we remain committed to doing that. But, there are, you know, with the 39 frozen positions, the service demands just aren't necessarily being met. And the community, sometimes animal control is an example. When there was a, when we had a position that was vacant, we moved animal control from environmental health to the police department because instead of having one staff person that was dispatching animal control, we moved that to the existing infrastructure of the 911 center and the non-emergency telephone number. And so, we reduced that operating expense. And we also, because in order to have the hours covered, we needed to have three animal control officers, but, you know, so that's 21 shifts, no, excuse me, that's 15 shifts a week. There's not animal control activity for a full 15 shifts a week. And so, by us moving animal control into a civilian position in the police department, the individuals are able to handle the animal control needs, but also, when they have non-animal control needs, then they are able to do civilian work in the police department and support a 24/7 operation that has tasks that needs to be addressed. But, compounding that is it's a difficult time to, to fill police officer positions. And so, we have been constantly advertising, you know, the list, the opportunity to apply to be a police officer is available and we're constantly working our way through the list. But, it's very difficult in a department of, of as many police officers as we have to stay fully staffed all the time. And so, that puts additional demand on the civilian positions within the police department. And so, the animal control area is an area that the community has reacted and said, we're not receiving the same level of service that we used to receive. So, we've been efficient, but we've lost the level of service in some people's mind. It's still a higher level of service than a lot of communities provide, but it's not what the community was used to. And so, we're going to have to continue to degrade the services in order to stay within our financial means. These are, those are just some very specific examples.
No, I appreciate that. Are there, did we exhaust all other revenue sources or look at what other communities are doing, you know, and I know it's not a popular topic, but even, I know to the west, you know, there's some machines that's, video gaming machines that's providing opportunities for communities to recapture some of this. And I don't even know the notion of boutique lounges, you know, that special ti- I know, you're-
Cannabis?
There you go, you know. I, I just don't know if there are other opportunities to seek or be creative with revenue sources than to pass it on to the residents for kind of what-if positions. And that's with all due respect, I know we just haven't evaluated the exact need. But, right now, there are kind of what-ifs strong possibles if you're playing spades in a card game.
Sure. Good question. So, we have looked at every potential revenue source that we can think of and that we can find from other municipalities across the country. And we, we continue to kind of inventory those and provide estimated annual value of, of those types of fees or taxes. And there aren't those opportunities that generate significant dollars. I mean, I, I think it's, Julian, you know, is kind of the keeper of the master list and-
Yes, thank you, John. So, we, we keep this menu of options essentially and through time, we've somewhat exhausted that, that menu of options, all the big sources have been implemented. You mentioned a, a video gaming revenue options, we've looked at that in the 200,000 annual range, depending on the number of terminals that are licensed. I think that the way, the, the reason why the property tax is, is being proposed, it's not necessarily to, to shift the burden onto the residents, it's, part of it is a, a question of equity and, and fairness. The tax base is so large that a $750,000 increase becomes a $21 annual cost. There are other revenue sources that are much more direct. We talked about a streaming tax, for example. That's going to impact a home much more than 21. A 5% streaming tax on an average $80, $90 monthly subscription cost for a home is going to impact them a lot more than $21 a year. Now, we may come to a point where a streaming tax becomes necessary. We're talking about maintaining services and implementing this levy increase and, and the reason why, why is it 750, why is it 749? It is somewhat scientific, so that includes three positions unfrozen. In our best case assessment, right now, before we sit with departments, we don't think we'll get away with less than three unfrozen positions coming in '27. The, the service levels that we need to maintain require, is that two in public safety, one not, all three in public safety or community development? We just don't know. Whatever, the highest need will rise to the top essentially as we meet with departments and we'll determine. So, that's $350,000, $400,000 is the safer grant. So, that's the scientific backing into that 750. That's just to keep what, what we have today, but it, I'm going back and forth, but, Trustee, are there options? There are. There are none that are so equitable and fair, unfortunately, as the property tax, that that minimizes the burden, spreads it so far and wide. But, but we may come to you in the future for additional sources as well.
Yeah, I'm just, and, and I'm almost done. But, I just know now, healthcare costs, food, and, you know, so $21, I know it's an annual cost, but that's just from here. You got the libraries, you got the school districts, you got the county. That $21 annually could be $200 easily increase. And I just wanted to name the obvious while we're having this discussion.
Trustee Lissa Levy and then we'll go back to this side.
So, I would like to just point out that raising taxes is not a popular thing, which is something that I said last board meeting. But, the other thing that I would like to point out is that we operate in a partnership of community. And we want to be a community that welcomes everyone, we want to be able to attract residents, we want to be able to attract businesses, and we also want to be able to attract the highest level of professionals that we can. And without putting some skin in the game, of which I am one, I am a resident here, obviously, we need to, we need to be upholding our end of the bargain. And part of that is maybe $2 a month. And I think that that's a pretty good deal, honestly, to maintain services. Nobody's up here talking about, you know, an extreme level of raising taxes. But, I would also like to point out that every part of the financial piece pulls at another thread. So, are we frustrated that we're paying a lot of money towards the school districts? Yeah. And if we attracted more businesses and our tax situation changed, then we could talk about things like consolidating our school districts, which would be very helpful, bottom-line pocketbook, bread and butter issue. So, right now, we're talking about $2 a month on average. And I think as we move down the line and we are pulling at these threads and we're exploring these options, a lot more things become available. The truth is that we're just at a point where we have to make some really hard decisions and this is one of them. And I, I am sorry that it's coming down to this. And I also think it's a very reasonable, reasonable proposal. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Trustee Levy. Trustee Piersloven.
Thank you, Mayor. Like everybody else, it doesn't sit easily or well. However, I do want to question that we keep calling that the services will go down, we keep using the word service. I'd like to point out safety. As we continue to build new residences, which we want, whether it's affordable or luxury, we want more residents in, in the village, don't we then have to do an analysis of what that means from the fire and the police department as well? Can we, God forbid, if there was a huge fire in a big building like Optima, I need to know, that is my first concern, that we have enough fire safety to go in and take care of a situation like that? So, yes, I agree, we, we care about our services, we want to give services. I need to know how this affects our safety. Because first and foremost, that is the most important thing to me personally and to many residents, I believe.
So, I, I should clarify to say that I don't know the, the point we're trying to make is that, you know, we'll lose service levels in public safety or non-public safety. That's, we're maintaining service levels today with the existing workforce. What the phenomenon we're observing, however, is that we're covering it with overtime. So, if we're short in staff, and this is not a funding issue in public safety, it's just the, the reality of the times, it's a very difficult profession to recruit. So, we're, you know, chasing our tail and, and being able to recruit public safety. But, we're maintaining service levels through overtime. Overtime's expensive, costs rise. Staffing reduces overtime but increases benefits costs, pension costs. So, that's the balance we play year after year. I don't think the board should, to, you know, walk away thinking that service levels will drop to unsafe levels. That is absolutely not what we're recommending here. The, the three-
And not what I was inferring, I want to make that clear. It's just a question of doing an analysis, eh, we build more buildings, as we have more residents, how does that affect?
But, and that's something that the departments, both fire and police, do on an, on an annual basis as they present their budgets and, and make their, their demands known to us. And that's what we're going to go through, through fiscal '27, which will determine how these three unfrozen positions will get spread.
And I, I would just add, anticipating needs versus, or anticipating the services or the, or what's required versus what actually happens, that's a balancing act. And so, our approach is not to anticipate this is going to cause X and so, we're going to staff up for that. We monitor it and we work by workload. And so, we really manage by workload. And so, that's why part of this discussion is, as we move into the budget process every year, we have to look at workload. And that's why there has been, we have added positions, you know, since, you know, since the recession, there have been some positions that have been added, but we still sit today at 39 less than what we had back then. So, just-
Another question, please.
Please.
If we agree to this and it's voted upon, that doesn't, I mean, it's a slippery slope. I mean, then people were concerned, then does that mean every year in the new budgetary year that we're going to expect that we're going to keep raising taxes? We keep talking about it only at $2 a month now per resident, but then what's, what's next? What's next? Once we open up that can of worms, what's next? And, you know, we passed, this board passed a fiscally responsive budget, right? Prior, in the beginning, it was April, correct? When we do budget?
May.
May, sorry. May, we, we passed a budget that was a sound budget, it was a balanced budget, and now this many months later, this is coming before us. Why is this coming before us now and it didn't, doesn't come before us at the next time that we're doing a budget review?
But, that's, that's only because by the time we meet to discuss budget, this opportunity has passed, we'll be a year behind. We won't be able to levy for fiscal '27 if we don't take action tonight because we're collecting a '25 levy in mid-2027. So, it's just a timing issue. The budget that was approved for fiscal '26, that's already at the frozen levy amount. That was approved in, in, in 2024, we essentially budgeted at the fixed amount. We will be, if the board approves this levy, this will go into fiscal '27 budget. So, it's not, this, this was not unknown or new, we're only preparing this because of the fiscal '27 future budget need.
A couple of things. First of all, I, I do recall that as part of the budget presentation last May, we were told that we were okay for this year, but there was going, we were facing a structural deficit in, I think it was either the, it was the following year, we were, we, there would be a str- if not the following year, it was going to be the year after that.
Twenty-eight, correct.
Twenty-eight, there was going to be a structural deficit. So, you, you were good, staff was good about putting us on notice. What I would say to the comment about is this going to start, you know, is this going to be every year? I think, you know, certainly our commitment is that every budget year, staff does their work and we look at each year on its own. I don't think anything is a given. I think, you know, some of our, our partners, as Trustee Lissa Levy said it, you know, they do every year, it's raised and raised and raised. I don't see this board doing that. Might we raise them again in the future? Maybe. But, I don't see it becoming something that is done on a rote basis, year in, year out. Trustee Kamani Levy.
So, that, that was one of my questions as well. Thank you, Trustee Piersloven. How are we, what are we going to do to prevent things that are happening to our neighbors in Chicago, for example, where they've just recently gotten increases of 205%? How are we going to prevent that? And, and I have a follow-up question after you, if you want to answer that, or do you want me to?
So, okay, let, let's do this so I don't get confused. How are we going to prevent that? So, I will say that when we look at budgeting, so, number one, we look at budgeting as a multi-year process, we never look at just the first year. That's why you have a, a long-range financial section in your budget documents and we discuss it. So, we are trying to project out and, and, and trying to see issues that are coming down the pike as early as we can and, and plan for revenue upfront and plan for reduced expenses upfront. Our approach through the years has always been to go to expense reductions first, and when we've exhausted expense reductions, existing revenue source growth, and when we have exhausted that, new revenue sources. That's the plan going forward. I will say some of our communities are getting into, in a hot mess, specifically relating to public safety pensions. Chicago, for example, has got a very big burden on public safety pensions. This board and, and staff has already done the work, the legwork upfront in that. Now, hopefully, the state will not undercut us and, and, and change tier two and revert it back to tier one. But, we've addressed our public safety pensions by and large through the, the pension obligation bonds. If the state again rolls back, that's something we'll bring to the board with additional strategies on how to address future pension growth. But, the best we can do is look forward as far as we can, project, and then give you some options, informed options to make decisions on.
So, my second question, how are we going to protect renters from having this get passed on to them and our aging population who just can't afford it, they're on a strict budget? And yes, it's $2, but that $2 could really be a pinch for them.
That's, go ahead.
So, what I would, sorry, repeat a statistic that I quoted at the last meeting when Village Manager Lockerbie and I met with Cook County Assessor Fritz Cagney over the summer. He quoted a statistic that in, now, this is in Niles Township, all of Niles Township, not just Skokie, 27% of homeowners, property owners who qualify for homeowners exemptions have not filed for those exemptions. And the way the system is set up, once a homeowner does file, there's a three-year look back. So, you not only would get it, so, we will, you know, be proactive. I was going to read it later, but I'll say it now. I've spoken to Niles Township Assessor Scott Bagnell, he's ready to help residents. The assessor's office, Cook County Assessor's office, is going to be having an event at the, on, actually, it's coming Thursday, December 4th, at the Niles Senior Center in the afternoon to review assessment notices, assist with filings and appeals and to answer questions from both residential and commercial property owners. We're going to promote that in tomorrow's e-newsletter. So, for the seniors, it's making sure that they, I mean, I'm a senior, my husband and I, once we became seniors, we get a, a break, an additional break. So, we need to make sure that everybody is filing for all of the exceptions to which they're entitled.
Right, and I appreciate that. And I know for a fact that several of the residents where I live at the Optima have done that. And it has not relieved any of the pressure for them. And I, I'm assuming it's because it's a high rise and the higher up you go, the more you're paying in taxes. I had a resident come to me and say, she is paying $20,000 in taxes. So, and, and there is- So, and there is an aging population there. I don't, I'm just really concerned that they are really going to feel the squeeze with this.
And I think we should also keep in mind that we have control currently of 5% of the property tax bill. And so the village's portion is typically in town, 5%. And so when people's tax bill is $10,000 or $1,000, we are 5% of that. So we only have control over 5% of the property tax bill.
Trustee Schechter.
Yeah, I think a way to alleviate is to understand another part of that equation. When people were asking, are we going to be, you know, it's just going to be increasing every year? I think we have to recognize that over about the last five years, and this is Skokie, this is all of Cook County, that the property tax burden, it used to be predominantly commercial properties, you know, over 51%, way over, and residential was less. Now it has shifted, and that's why people, that's a big reason why homeowners are seeing higher tax bills. It's because of that, it's because of that actual shift. So part of it is the levies, but another part of it is the tax burden shift. So one suggestion I would like to make is that we be really strategic. If we're going to be, you know, raising the taxes, that we use it in some way to really incentivize. I know we're looking at, you know, trying to grow our industrial base, our commercial base. The more industry we get, I mean, it's better for jobs, I mean, it's better all the way around. It will also reduce the burden on residents. The other piece too, and I thought that's a really good question about especially lower-income renters, is there are programs out there, I don't know if Cook County still has it, but a Class IX property tax abatement. If you're, if you're a landlord and you have a, I think it's, it might be over four, four or six units, and it's at least a third or low income, if you need to do a major system, you know, you can do that, and then your property taxes are abated. And so in order that you are able to make those repairs and keep your lower-income renters there, but, so that's one point. But I do think that it's important that in the long run, we've got to figure out a way to not, not put our eggs in the basket of expanding housing at the expense of manufacturing and, you know, income-producing property.
I appreciate those comments, trustee Schechter. And one thing, a couple of things come to mind. One, and they both relate to the strategic plan. One, our community has told us loud and clear over the last five months of engagement that economic development and growth in our economic sectors is important to the community. So we know that that is a charge from our residents, so that's number one. Number two, when you talk about the Cook County incentive or assistance to landlords, one of the priorities that we just set in our goal-setting session for the strategic plan was to increase landlord training. So that's something that maybe staff could work to include that as part of a module or outreach to the landlords when that training commences. Other comments or questions? Okay, trustee Iverson.
Director Prandey, thank you. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I don't really have a question, I just want to point out a few things. First off, you know, your presentation and other conversations that you've had with this group has illustrated the ways you've tightened, belt-tightened, and changes that you have made to try to manage our costs. What we have here is a choice. And 35 years of a frozen property tax levy is confusing, always was, in that it feels like our property taxes aren't going up. But they've been going up for 35 years, and that's what is confusing for us. The reality is that it's an important revenue source without which we have to turn to other, more regressive forms of taxation. Property taxes is the right way for us to strengthen our very fiscally conservative and sound village. And that's why I strongly support what you're suggesting. Thank you.
Are there other comments from the board? Okay, if not, what I'm going to ask for is to, we're going to vote on these one at a time. But what I'm going to ask for is for a motion to approve, and I'll get to the particulars, motion in a second, and then we'll open it for public comment. So first, I'll ask for a motion to approve and adopt the ordinance establishing the 2025 Cook County property tax levy and giving formal notice to the Cook County clerk of the aggregate amount of property taxes to be levied from Skokie properties. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Lissa Levy, is there a second? Trustee Gail Schechter. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. As is our practice, because it is an action item, we will allow up to five comments at three minutes each. So I see a line forming. Yes, Ms. Davila, then Mr. Ryan, then we'll go with, yes, Ms. Pat. I'm going to stop. We'll only be allowing up to five comments. So one, two, three, four, five. Mr. Solganik will be our last commenter.
Good evening, mayor and trustees. I want to echo something, I'm Ellen Weber, 4636 Elm Terrace. Following up with trustee Schechter's comments, one thing I've looked at, looked for in the village budget is a benchmark of the equalized assessed value of the village by property type, residential, industrial, commercial, and I can't find it. The rule of thumb, Urban Land Institute, used to be that for every dollar paid by property tax of a home, it costs more than the dollar to serve it, and industrial and commercial costs less. So communities would strive to be at 65% maximum residential. It's a little bit different in Cook County with the tiered residential, but the concept still holds. And I've also looked for the increase in fire calls. I see we're up 23%. So as you increase your residential with this density push, which I personally have reservations over, you are increasing service demands. And I think you need to slow down the density until you get the industrial and the commercial balanced out with it. When my folks moved to Skokie, our family moved here 60 years ago. Skokie had one of the lowest property taxes in the region, but we also had all these factories, they're gone. Okay, we've replaced them by commercials, so we've got sales tax. But what is our EAV? I just couldn't find it, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Mr. Ryan, who is a former finance director for the village.
Thank you. That's my introduction. Dan Ryan, resident of Skokie since 1985. I was finance director of the village from 1980 to 1990. Some of the stuff I have to say has been brought first by the board members. Criterion for revenues includes two very important factors. One is certainty. It's got to be able to fund the village government specifically in times of economic downturn. Julian used the phrase economically sensitive, I used the phrase elastic. Elastic revenues are great, they grow with the economy, income, tax sales. They also retract bad when things are bad. And the property tax fits a good use there. The other is equity fairness. It's a little tougher standard to meet, but we generally want taxes to be paid based on the individual's ability to pay. So your share of the state income tax, very good. Real estate transfer tax, very good. When you get into the consumption-type taxes, sales tax, food and beverage taxes, they start out seeming fair because I buy a used car for $5,000, someone buys an ice car for $50,000, he paid 10 times more for the car, he's got 10 times the ability, he paid 10 times more tax. But studies show that sales and similar taxes, food and beverage taxes, eventually are regressive. They hit the lower-income individuals harder than a higher-income tax, than a higher-income individual. And I, without studies to support, but I would also express an opinion, that in Illinois, with our structure where goods are taxed and sales taxed, but services are not, that exacerbates regressivity because everyone needs school supplies, clothing, gas in their tank. Not everyone needs a spa visit or a trip to the theater and whatnot, and that separates lower-income individuals from higher-income individuals. So the property tax fills a lot of these roles. It's certain for sure, especially in Skokie, high plus, almost 100% of property taxes get paid. There's a level of equity in there, and no one likes it when, you know, the widow Brown can't pay her property taxes. But there are programs, and in Cook County, those are being looked at for expansion. But the one-bedroom apartment condo behind Portillo's versus a two-bedroom house versus a four-bedroom split versus a mansion on a golf course, as they go up in value, commensurate with ability to pay, taxes go up with it. It's a certain tax, it's neutral, it's easy to collect, and it's fair. So there should be no shame at taking a look at property taxes again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Ms. Pat.
My name is Shelley Pat. I am a nearly 25-year resident of Skokie, and I love living in Skokie. I moved to Skokie very much for the wonderful village services. And I've got to say, in my 25 years, I have never had a complaint about any trouble getting services from our amazing village staff. And I'm just amazed by the level of services I have living in Skokie. And as much as no one likes paying more in taxes, I'm willing to pay it, you know? And I think this is a very persuasive argument that we want to keep the services we have. And I'm so glad to hear these questions about our rapid expansion being brought up as a question because in these 35 years since the tax levy has been frozen, the population of Skokie has also grown by 14%. That's 8,500 more people who need many more services. And the world has changed, and some of those services might be different services than were needed before. And every village board meeting I come to, there are people who come saying, not only are they not happy with the level of service we have now, they want more. Why aren't you doing more? Why isn't the village doing more? Why isn't the village doing more? Well, all these things do cost money. And as many people have, you know, has been brought up tonight, yes, there's a concern that what if we start raising property taxes now, where will it end? I've got to say, raising taxes in Skokie is nothing new. In the time I've lived here, we've raised the fuel tax, as was already mentioned. There's a 2% restaurant tax that was not here. Refuge pickup fees were added on to our utility bills as refuse service decreased. And our vehicle stickers might not have gone up a very large amount, but still went up. And there's additional 1% tax at Old Orchard that does not benefit anyone in the village and goes directly towards economic development for the Westfield Corporation, which might be a necessary thing. But I'm a lot more concerned about some of those regressive side taxes or, as Mr. Lockerbie put it, the different levers going into place than this very straightforward, whatever it'll be, $1.50 a month added on to my property tax bill. So I applaud the village staff for trying to come up with all of the most creative ways you can do this and the village board for taking this on.
Thank you, Ms. Pat. Ms. Polka.
I think it's amazing that you know everybody in the village. My name is Kimberly Polka. I, I could have just let Shelley speak and sat down, but, you know, it's not in my nature. I don't envy any of you for having to sit up there because I know that there's going to be people who are unhappy. Trustee Levy, I moved my grandmother out of Skokie because she couldn't afford property taxes. I understand that there are going to be people who are going to have a hard time with this, and I am not unsympathetic. However, it is amazing that for 35 years there was a freeze. It is unrealistic to expect to be able to keep it in perpetuity. Our property taxes are very low, and I, like everybody else, I don't want to pay more. But people were complaining on Facebook that their streets weren't plowed fast enough two days after Thanksgiving. I called today, it's funny that you were talking about an animal control officer. I called today looking for an animal control officer, and there was none on staff today. We cannot expect the services and not expect to pay for them. And that is the reality of the situation. So it's probably past time, there probably shouldn't be 39 positions frozen. And I'm glad you're taking the step to do what has to be done when it's not an easy decision. And I don't want to give away my money to Skokie or anybody else, but I am happy to pay for this.
Thank you, Ms. Polka. Mr. Solganik.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eugene Solganik. I sit on the Economic Development Committee for the village of Skokie. I've lived in Skokie for the past 32, 33 years, and I'm a huge fan of this village, huge. So there are a couple of things which I would like to address. Number one, I thought that every trustee brought up excellent, excellent comments and excellent questions. And I would especially want to emphasize what trustee Robinson said. And trustee Robinson brought up a very interesting point, and I'm going to backtrack a little bit here. I ran several different businesses in my professional career, and there are two different items, budget items, that you are looking at when you run a business. First of all, you know, you have your expenses that you cut. I mean, you have to cut your expenses if times are tough. And you also need to increase your revenue. So I would like to say that, you know, a $2 a month increase is really, it's not about the $2 a month increase. It really isn't. It's about, you know, every municipality's answer to problems is always raising taxes. You know, we raise taxes, we raise taxes. It's wonderful. I mean, it's, that's how it operates. But what we need to do, we need to raise revenue. And trustee Robinson, you know, he was absolutely correct. We need to raise revenue. There, you know, we need to have, we need to look at our village differently than what we have, than maybe what we are doing right now or not doing or whatever. What we need to do is this, in my opinion. You know, first of all, we need to bring more businesses to Skokie. You know, we need to bring more businesses that are going to bring more revenue to Skokie. It has to be done, it's a must, otherwise we're always going to increase taxes. Number two, we need to attract, we need to have a program in place where we need to attract solid, middle-class people who pay taxes here in this village, who shop in this village, who buy property in this village, who are paying taxes in this village, who are contributing to the bottom line of this village. I have, you know, I have a 25-point plan if somebody wants to hear. I'm not going to do it right now, but if I, you know, if anybody wants to get together with me, I can read my plan to you. It's not, it's not, you know, it, most of it is pretty realistic. It just takes a little bit of imagination, and it takes a little bit of legwork, and it takes a little bit of willingness to think outside of the box. And this is what we need to do. As a village, we have to kind of like, you know, we should not concentrate on the past. We have to look to the future. And the future is going to be pretty bleak if we're going to be concentrating on raising taxes only. We need to concentrate on things other than that.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Solganik, but your time is up. Thank you, and thank you for your service on the Economic Development Commission. He's part of the class of 2025. All right, so there's been a motion and a second. We've heard from the community. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Lowen?
This is a tough one, but I feel that we do have to make sure that we ensure services for the village. So I'll go aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kamani Levy?
Nay.
Trustee Robinson?
Nay.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Okay. The next, is there a motion to approve and adopt the 2025 Tax Abatement Ordinance reducing the total amount of property taxes levied by Cook County on the village's behalf for the 2025 tax year? Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Lissa Levy, is there a second? Trustee Gail Schechter. Any comments or questions? Any comments from the public? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Lowen?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kamani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Nay.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
It's me again.
Yes, it's you again.
Item C on my agenda is a summary and status update at the property at 4930 Oakton Street. On July 7th of 2025, an update was given regarding the litigation and arbitration cases for the 4930 the 4930 Oakton Street property. Essentially, the next significant dates were in October and November of this year, when the arbitration panel from the American Arbitration Association met, and the status date for Excalibur's mortgage foreclosure was up, respectively. Today, we have Rodney Lewis from Holsonelli Law Firm, who has been a partner with the village and spearheading the village's engagement in this, and he has a more detailed summary and update. Thank you, Rodney.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Trustees, entire board, and residents that are here. Corporation Counsel Mangler started off sharing the situation that has been hindering the development of that property, and namely, that's the underlying litigation that's been ongoing. We made a decision early on to try to reduce the legal spend of the village by moving to dismiss the complaint that included the village as a defendant. We were successful in that capacity, which meant we were able to monitor the situation from the sidelines without having to, again, incur legal expense participating in the litigation itself. There was a mediation that was unsuccessful. There was an arbitration over a very narrow issue, which was whether the lender or the general contractor had priority, if and when there is resources that are developed from either the sale or the eventual development of the property, who would have priority, and the arbitration panel decided that the, or they found that the general contractor had priority. That was important first step in resolving the underlying litigation. Next, all of the parties, the lien holders, et cetera, were to participate in an arbitration, where they would figure out how to move this project forward. The unfortunate part for us is that the arbitration panel set the arbitration for September of 2026. That is, an untenable situation, something completely unforeseeable, that they would take that long. In my 20 years of practicing law, I have never seen an arbitration being set that far out, once everyone's at the table and ready to arbitrate. So what that's done is put the village in a situation where we, as a team, have worked with Corporate Counsel Mangler and her team in trying to come up with some ideas to move this forward, taking a more active approach while still being responsible financially and not taking on burdens at the village level that we don't intend to and we don't think are a good idea to. So to that end, we have first had a conversation, we've had a sit-down meeting with the lender, and they've put together some proposals that we're considering and we're exploring, again, with the end goal being to resolve the underlying litigation and actually get the project moving forward. We also, most recently, have been contacted by the general contractor, and they've asked for a meeting with the village so that they can propose some ideas, how to accomplish both goals, resolve the underlying litigation, and move the project forward. We understand what's there, and we understand that that is right now an eyesore and something that people feel very passionately about, but I want to let you know, as a partner with the village, that people on the team, the legal team, and other people that are in these meetings, have been working very diligently to try to find a resolution and a path forward for this property. So I'm here to answer any questions that you all might have about where things are and how we can move them forward.
So the questions will come from the board, not from the audience? Okay. Is there anything else that you would like to say? There was, as Corporation Counsel Mangler said, there was a detailed memo in our packet.
That was attached, yes.
That was attached, yes.
So we have Rodney in person.
Right. So, any questions for Rodney or Corporation Counsel Mangler? Trustee Iverson, do you?
Just very quickly, Excalibur, the lender, how much are they owed?
So we also have Rodney Tonelli, who's good with facts and figures.
Rodney Tonelli is our Economic Vitality Manager, if I'm correct? Yeah.
So I'm going to do my best to remember, but this isn't going to be the exact number, but I believe when I filed their foreclosure in the past February of 2025, it was around 9.7 million.
Thank you, Rodney.
Other questions? Trustee Schecter?
Just curious about what some of those ideas are that you say you've been batting around.
Sure. Without going into too much detail, it involves multiple parts. One, trying to get the contractors, general contractor and the subcontractors, together to understand that they have a better position moving forward financially if they play ball, so to speak. If there's a developer that's identified, and they may have an opportunity to participate in the completion of the project, then perhaps they should be a little more easy to get along with in terms of getting this resolved, either within the courts or around the table, right? So the thing is, right now, that's one piece, and then the lender, and the amount that they're claiming to be owed, they're in a much better position to move forward and not have this liability, and not have this debt that's sitting out there, if they are more amenable to finding a solution. So it's about getting the right people together and incentivizing them to do their part, instead of being obstinate and making us take this long to even get to the point where we have an arbitration, and finding real solutions to move this forward. So that's, those are the, those are the ideas that are on the table right now and that we're pursuing.
So trustee, I would also say that the fact that the parties are actually talking at this point, I think the other parties involved realize that waiting an additional 10 months is not in anybody's best interest at all. So I think it's a positive step that everybody's seemingly willing to sit down and see if we can come to a resolution. I know Rodney and John have been out speaking with developers and gaining interest that way, so we're keeping our fingers crossed that hopefully we can come up with some kind of resolution to this.
Other questions for the team? Trustee Lissa Levy?
I'm very concerned about safety at this point. It's been a skeleton for quite a long time. My concern right now is, should something happen with the structure that impacts safety? If some of the structure should fall apart, if someone should trespass and be injured, what entity is responsible for taking care of that?
From a liability standpoint, I can say the village is not, would not be liable. And there are disputes going on as to who would hold that liability right now. Excalibur, the lender, they actually are in a position where they're trying to obtain a title from E&amp;M, who was the actual owner. Are you all familiar with that ownership entity right now? Okay, so liability would lie with E&amp;M right now. Excalibur is part of their proposal, would work with E&amp;M in terms of releasing whatever mortgage they may have to get title, and then be able to take more of an active role in moving the project forward. So I hope that answers your question.
But I also think that with regard to the structural integrity, and I probably...
So annually, the village is undertaking, in partnership with Excalibur, with the lender, an assessment of the structure and making sure that it is safe, and so that is happening on a regular basis.
Other questions? Yes, trustee Iverson?
Why, why did the court set September? Do you have any idea why they put such a distant date for that arbitration?
Sure. So it wasn't the courts. So the court is monitoring the arbitration as well as we are. So this is the arbitration panel, it's a three-person arbitration panel, and either due to their respective calendars and other arbitration they have set up prior to this, that was the first date that these three were able to schedule the arbitration with the length of time they expected to take. And I, again, was very surprised.
Thank you. Just one more.
Yes, sure.
And so you are men, you're meeting with the parties to try to find a path?
Correct.
I heard you mention that you're meeting with Excalibur and Russell. E&amp;M, are you meeting with them as well? Because they seem to owe 9 million one way and 11 million the other.
E&amp;M has been part of the discussion from the beginning, and one of the things that we talked about, and I won't go too far in the depth in this, is suggesting to them that they agree to a consent foreclosure, which would get them out of the situation that they're in, where they can't move things forward, but then allow someone else to be able to move some things forward. So we've been talking to E&amp;M and their counsel from the beginning.
Thank you.
Other questions for the team? Okay, if not, thank you. Thank you to village manager, to Corporation Counsel Mangler, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Tonelli, thank you. I'd like to point out that this is the third report that has been given since April on this project. It remains top of mind, as I hope the discussion tonight gave witness to, and we will continue to give regular reports to the community. So.
Okay. Let's see. Item D on my agenda is a request for closed session in accordance with paragraph 2C11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act pertaining to the review and discussion of pending litigation.
Okay, so is there a motion moved by trustee Kamani Levy, seconded by trustee Pierce Lowen? Is there any comments, questions? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Lowen?
Aye.
Trustee Schecter?
Aye.
Trustee Kamani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Does that conclude? I'm sorry, yes, that concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a modified review report by Plan Commission Chairperson Paul Luke related to Walmart at 3534 to 3654 Two Way Avenue.
Good evening, mayor members of the board. In accordance with the village code, the Corporation Counsel, myself, and the Community Development Director, we reviewed a request from Walmart at 3534 through 3642 Avenue for amended, an amendment to the site plan approval through the modified review procedure. It is our opinion that the modified, modification to the site is in substantial compliance with the intent of the original site plan approval and special use permit ordinances. The village received a request from Walmart, an existing large format retail store offering general merchandising and grocery products, to amend the site plan approval ordinance number 15-4-Zebra 4132 through the modified review procedure. In 2014, the petitioner received approval from the board for a site plan approval for a planned development at 3530 and 3690 through 3710, 3714 Two Way Avenue, which was case 2014-38P. The petitioner is requesting to amend the approved site plan to include 10-vehicle EV charging spaces located along the northernmost parking lot row of the existing parking lot. The proposal includes two ADA-accessible EV charging stations and eight standard EV charging stations. As a result, the total number of parking spaces will be reduced by 14, from 454 to 441. The site and use will continue to meet the minimum parking requirements. The existing number of non-EV accessible spaces and designated Walmart pickup spaces will remain unchanged. It is requested that the request be approved.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Trustee Kamani Levy?
Did we, did you state in there that it would maintain the ADA compliance?
Yes.
Okay.
No, don't have more, they have more than a parking.
Okay. Trustee Schecter?
Just a basic question, just wondering how it is that a request like this came to the Plan Commission, that it's not just an as-of-right?
Well, we have a review process.
It's a modified review process, trustee, when they have a site plan approval or special use, and they're requesting to change it in some way, but it doesn't substantially affect the underlying approval, like adding several parking spaces? So they don't go through the Plan Commission? Chairman Luke, Community Development Director, and Corporation Counsel will review it to make sure it's not substantially changing the original. So bypasses a lot.
Trustee Robinson?
I think it's a great plan. You know, if you build it, it will come. I'm wondering if there is a plan or the talk of even future proof in this particular plan, where they can add even more later?
That would be up to Walmart. Also, as I understand it, there's no charge for the use of the chargers.
Right.
So, trustee Pierce Lowen?
Thank you. I'm just excited to see that Walmart's taking this initiative and that we're putting in some EV parking spaces, and I mirror my colleagues' comments, and I hope that they come back to us and ask for more.
I'm excited about it as well. I, just an anecdotal story, a dear friend of mine traveled across the country in an all-electric vehicle over Thanksgiving. They made their route from Walmart to Walmart because of having charging stations, and she shopped at every Walmart she went to. So this has other benefits, so. Any questions from the audience? Sir?
I don't disapprove of the concept of electric stuff there. I do violently disagree with the fact that there's enough parking in that parking lot. I go there regularly on Saturdays and Sundays during the middle of the day with my parents, and I'm here to say there's numerous times where we've had trouble finding a space in that at all, mostly because on the southern periphery here, there's a ton of outlots that have been developed that weren't there when this was originally approved, and I would ask for a deeper feasibility study on this issue. I'm not opposed to the concept, I'm opposed to, I would like to see a moratorium on outlot development in the shopping center, which, because it's been irresponsibly done. That's my only concern here, and it's caused problems getting in and out and finding spaces at peak times on weekends. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, there being none, a motion is needed to concur with the modified review case 2025-04M. Is there a motion? Trustee Robinson, seconded by trustee Lissa Levy. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Lowen?
Aye.
Trustee Schecter?
Aye.
Trustee Kamani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes. Thank you, Chairman Luke. The next, stay, what? The next item on the agenda, our three Plan Commission cases related to 7952 Lincoln Avenue, as presented by Chairperson Luke. So the way we're going to do this is the cases will be, the project will be presented, we will take all three cases together for discussion, we'll then have comments, questions, we will allow up to five comments from the community, and then we will vote on each. There's three different votes, and we will take them in order. So just so everyone knows, that's what our process is going to be. Chairman Luke?
Thank you, mayor, for the introduction, but let me add to the record that the cases are case 2025-04P, which is a site plan approval, related case 2025-05P, subdivision request, and 2025-20P, the special use at 7952 Lincoln Avenue.
Thank you, Chairman Luke.
At the November 6 meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed requests from Tyler Manick, representing 7252 Lincoln LLC, for a site plan approval for a two-lot planned development that was recommended, as approved by the commission on a vote of seven ayes, no nays, and two members absent. Also included in the request were the cases that I pre-mentioned, and also, too, they were voted with the same results. The proposed planned development will include a new six-story mixed-use building with 58 residential units and first-floor commercial with an indoor, with, excuse me, with an outdoor seating area, expansion of an existing commercial building to contain a child and youth services... seating area, expansion of an existing commercial building to contain a child and youth services use and a restaurant with a four-season outdoor dining area. The intent of the two-lot subdivision is to structure ownership, financing, and development responsibilities of the mixed-use residential portion and the commercial portion, portion of the project. The Plan Commission recommended approval for the following items of relief. Relief from chapter 118-93, sub E2C, to allow outdoor dining area to, on private property to be located within a 15-foot site distance triangle. Also relief from 18-184A to allow a building height of 19 feet along a retail street rather than the required 25 minimum height in the CX district. Also relief from chapter 118, 212A, sub 1, to allow a stall with, with, excuse me, to allow a parking stall width of 8.5 feet rather than the required 9 feet, and allow an aisle width of 20 feet rather than the, than the required 24 feet. Final relief for chapter 118-218, sub B, to reduce the guest parking spaces required based on a, on a shared parking agreement under chapter 118, 211 at 7952 Lincoln Avenue. The Plan Commission incurred with staff's recommendation to grant the site plan approval in part that the condition related to the residential portion of the, of the project being constructed and certifications for occupancy issued within two years being amended to five years. The attached conditions reflect the Plan's Commission motion to amend the changes to five years. Commissioners asked questions about offsite shared parking agreements and valet services, about the stucco durability finishing of, at the street level, and about the left turns from the property onto Lincoln Avenue. A left turn, limited sign will be in place, which will limit left turns in morning rush and after, or late evening rush hours. The proposed review by the Paris Commission was, was on May 14th, and was awarded a certificate of appropriateness. Therefore, on the vote of, as I've mentioned, a vote of seven ayes, no nays, two members absent, which is consistent with all three cases, the, the Plan Commission moves to approve.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Luke? The developer is here also, if there are questions. Questions, comments? Trustee Schechter?
I have a, have a number of concerns, but from a, a very fundamental point of view, we've got this, the anchor of the whole development is currently not a legal use. The action behavior centers would be a ground floor, but not a retail use in the downtown. It just doesn't seem to me to be an appropriate use.
That is the special use request.
But just, just being mindful that, you know, everything is based on this. The other question that I have, which is for the, the developer, is the housing chapter of our comprehensive plan, which we just redid, states that Skokie seeks to quote, "meet a range of housing development that caters to the current needs of families in Skokie", but 72% of the 58 units would be studios and one bedrooms. So, so even though the, what you wrote, what the petitioner wrote was that this would be a healthy unit mix, this doesn't seem to me to be a particularly healthy unit mix. So, I just wondered what is driving this predominant, I mean, where is the market? What, what's the market study that's been done that shows that this is what Skokie needs?
Looks like the developer's deciding who's going to take the question for the team. We'll give you another minute.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, my name is Tyler Manick. I'm the attorney with Shane Banks, Kenyon Schwartz, and I'm the attorney for the applicant. This isn't really the answer to your question, but it is a comment. The ABC, I wouldn't really say it's the anchor of the center, it's just, they had, they have the easiest path forward to get occupied. The real anchor to the development is the mixed-use building, it's just more of a complicated and challenging build that's going to take longer. So, I just wanted to clarify that. As far as kind of the unit mix is concerned, one thing I would like to point out is, you know, under our affordable obligation, we, we are using one of the three bedrooms as our affordable obligation, which is above and beyond what's required by the code. So, we do think that that's like a helpful step forward of fulfilling, you know, the housing goals of the village by adding a family-sized unit as an affordable unit. But you did mention that the majority of the units are one bedrooms or studios, that is market-driven, and that about 28% of the units are two bedrooms or three bedrooms. But I have with the developers of the residential building Brett Katz with the Range Group and Paul Leongas here, too, who can speak more on the market of how that particular mix was developed.
Thank you.
Hi, Brett Katz with the Range Group. We're the developer of the mixed-use portion of the building. Unit mix is something that we focus quite a bit on and do some studies around the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as buildings that are in the immediate vicinity, looking at what units are renting. Families come in all shapes and sizes, and the one bedrooms, the predominantly one-bedroom unit here has proven to be a popular unit in the market here specifically. And so, it wasn't just a willy-nilly choosing that unit mix.
Are there other?
Yeah.
Trustee Schechter?
I had just another question, since you're standing up here. The staff?
I'm going to stop. There's someone's phone, someone's phone is going off. We're going to, we're going to hold proceedings until the phone is turned off. Okay, if anyone would just please make sure that your phones are silenced. Okay, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Trustee Schechter.
Yeah, it seems to me a significant change that our, our staff proposed a two-year timeframe, but the Plan Commission voted for a five-year timeframe. I mean, we, you just, I'm sure you were here to listen to the prior agenda item about, or a couple of items ago, about the Homewood Suites, and as you can imagine, the time for, the timeframe issue is, is of concern to us.
Yeah, absolutely. So, staff did recommend a two-year condition at the Plan Commission level. We did recommend a five-year condition, which was compatible with the five-year condition that we developed before the first time we were about to come before the board, before we were mandated back to Plan Commission. And the five-year time commitment or timeframe that we proposed was driven a lot by some unique circumstances for developing the residential building that are atypical of developing a lot of residential buildings, one of which is the need for IDOT approval of the subdivision and of the dedication that's being proposed as part of this, as well as, you know, Lincoln being in IDOT Road and the curb cut on IDOT. It's our experience that permits and approvals from IDOT can take up to a year or more, and that's what was a preliminary feedback we did get from IDOT when we were doing our preliminary reviews that staff requested us to do. Another caveat that is, complicates matter is the MWRD reviews, and it has to issue a permit for this, too, and they take several months. So, it's beyond the normal permit process that it could be up to a year and a half, two years, to get through the IDOT and then MWRD processes. Our construction timeline is two years, 24 months. We wouldn't start that until we got through the permitting process, the financing in place, which we can get, get after full entitlements. So, that's how we get the five years, because that's four years right there, and then we ask for a year, just because, you know, I know everybody's familiar with kind of the federal government turmoil. For instance, a lot of people's labor forces were disrupted for some of the federal policies that really shut down and slowed down work sites, so, you know, right now it's really unpredictable. Sometimes the federal government's tariff policy and foreign policy creates supply, supply constraints. So, really, we believe the construction process would be four years. We asked for five years to deal with the unpredictability that we deal with, with the government, the federal government and some of the policies on us. So, that's how we came to that.
Trustee Pierce Lowen?
Thank you. So, I have a few questions, thank you. What happens if you don't receive the IDOT permission? You're working on an assumption that you will for the curb cut and for the traffic flow?
Well, our architect, Katie, can do that. Staff was very diligent to make sure that we've done what we can do to get to a point where we're confident we can do that, but it's just the process of working with IDOT takes a long time, they're busy. So, we did do preliminary reviews where they accepted what we're doing, but Katie cannot.
Correct. I think because it's essentially a two-phase site, oh, sorry. Katie Lambert, partner with OKW Architects, happy to be here tonight. So, essentially, this is going to be a, a two-phase development. We're basically looking at the northern building being renovated and having an addition put on initially, and then the mixed-use building would come as, as essentially phase two. And so, we've already gone through the process of applying for the IDOT permit for the entire site, knowing that we will need it before we start the construction on that Phase One north building. IDOT has come back with relatively limited comments, and we're kind of one administrative step away from having the IDOT permit for the initial phase. And so, that has basically blessed the big picture, including access on Lincoln Avenue, everything, you know, related to kind of like the mechanics of the site. The second part, which is what Tyler was referring to, kind of gumming up the process, is that we're going to need to go back to IDOT before we build this second-phase building, because there's a lot of unknowns at this point in terms of where the exact utility connections will be. We haven't had mechanical engineers, plumbing engineers begin to design that second building. That's what would start basically after tonight, ideally. And so, after all of those final connection points are determined, our civil engineering team goes back to IDOT and again applies for a permit. The expectation is that at that point, it's a formality, because they've already formally blessed it. The problem is that that doesn't necessarily improve our timeline. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. More questions, if I may? The next one is, it's near the theater, but the public parking lot remains there, correct? I can't tell.
I don't believe so, but they will.
The public parking lot goes away?
Right.
What's the public, I'm sorry?
The one next to the?
So, you mean the area where people are, are parking now?
Which is not technically a public, it's not a public parking lot, it's, it's a?
It's private.
It's private property.
So, then how do we maintain the flow of visitors coming into the area, and where are they going to park? Especially for the, what's there already?
Are you referring to the parking associated with our building, or the, kind of the surrounding businesses and surrounding residents?
When you go to the Skokie Theater, there is a lot to park in.
On the south.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you. That would remain?
No.
So, where does theater parkers park?
So, there is a public lot on Lincoln.
Across the street.
Across the street.
That's one avenue.
Would that be enough for, to maintain what we've been utilizing already, is what I'm trying to understand?
May, may I? Sorry, man. The, you might have, I've seen a drawing of the walkway across that one long side to the parking behind.
Correct.
I don't know if you have that image.
What parking behind?
John, if you want to.
Good evening, Johan Bedekidl, the director. So, the, this is the walkway. So, this, this whole, this is where the Bank of America site sits right now. They're proposing an addition here. So, there's like a old canopy, here, this is where we're right here. There's a, there's a canopy.
Little drive-throughs.
Yeah, little drive-throughs. And you can ride out here, and there's a parking lot here. So, this is where everybody is parking right now.
And I misspoke.
The benevolence of whoever owns this property. This is not a formal public parking lot, it's just the property owner that was Bank of America agreed not to tow people. Mr. Leongas has agreed, since he's acquired the property several months ago, he has not towed people, he's not posted signs. So, it has served as an informal public parking lot since, for quite a while. I am not, the, the Skokie Theater has made arrangements either at another location, or they, because they were a legal, a, a use that had been in existence for as long as most of us can remember as a theater, they didn't have parking. So, they just, it didn't, it, it existed in perpetuity without formal parking. This is the village parking lot, people utilize the parking lot, our, the village's parking lot at off-hours for the farmer's market, other uses. But this, this all, all this parking will support the uses that are located here. And then there's parking agreements that the developers put in place at off-site locations that will support the parking needed. But any parking that's taking place there now, unless they're coming to uses here, would have to find another location to park.
Can I jump in the answer of Trustee Iverson's question? So, one of the things that we have throughout this process, have been clearly working closely with Wendy, the theater owner, on this project, and one of the things that I think Trustee Iverson was referencing, that unfortunately, we don't have a picture of that, but between our building and the theater, we're creating an art block that connects the theater to the public parking behind the theater. I do have on an iPad the visuals that we presented at Plan Commission. I can share that. Oh. Does that, that doesn't really come up as well as?
So, we recognize the mural on the Skokie Theater on the right, so that would be south. I had misspoken, Trustee Pierce Lowen, the, the, yeah, it's north.
Sure. My last comment.
I'm sorry to interrupt, just, I didn't want to get off point. We've also, part of working with the theater is we're going to have a valet service with the restaurant that's free. We did offer the theater also use of that valet service as well, for free.
Okay, that's, that's good to know, thank you. The last thing, though, in terms of Trustee Schechter, comment about the 72% studios and one bedroom, and this, I will disagree with you, and that is because I look at it as a way of getting young people to come to Skokie. And if they like being in Skokie, and they were in a studio, hopefully they will stay in Skokie, and if they get married, raise their families and grow in Skokie. So, I think if we have those abilities in an area like that, it might be enticing.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. My whole life has been stages of studio, law school, one-bedroom marriage, two-bedroom first kid, three-bedroom second kid, so, yes.
Other questions? Trustee Lissa Levy?
So, we talked about, my two questions have to do with traffic and safety. So, the first is, we talked about no left turns on, onto Lincoln during rush hour. So the first is, we talked about no left turns on, onto Lincoln during rush hour. What is the traffic study for the impact of the traffic overflow that then goes out into the surrounding blocks, given that people are going to have to make different kinds of traffic choices? And what is that impact for the people who live there and the commute times?
So I'm going to defer to Steve, our traffic engineer, who's worked with the village engineering department to answer that.
Can we pull the site plan back up?
Yeah.
Good evening, Steve Corcoran with Erickson Engineering, Director of Traffic Engineering, prepared the traffic study in your packet. If there's a restriction... Okay, we have the restriction that you can't make that left to go north toward the traffic signal. The folks can now, they can make that right turn here. And then, you know, so if you're coming here and you're making a left, you're either going to go straight north or make a right turn to go east on Oakton, or potentially a left turn to go west on Oakton. So for the most part, people can still, instead of making the left here, they can make the right turn here and go east on Oakton, or make the left turn and go north on, I'm sorry, north on Lincoln. Lincoln and then, so the one question is how some folks might have to make some changes in order to, if they're going to try to go west back on Oakton. But in terms of the impact, there, it's not going to be much of an impact. We're just diverting traffic within the same area. And there's capacity at this traffic signal as well as the driveways with that restriction.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, if we're talking about a special use permit to put in a school, what are the, what is the traffic flow for pick-up and drop-off? Not just in terms of how it impacts the traffic that is not picking up and dropping off, but how that impacts the actual people exiting and entering vehicles? And, you know, their safety?
Okay, there's no school that's being proposed on this site?
I'm referring to ABC Behavioral Center when I say school. So I'm sorry for not clarifying, but we're talking about services for children. Children require being picked up and dropped off, and so...
That is correct, and so, and I, what I wanted to, yeah, it's not a school. It's not going to be like a school where you have parents lined up to drop off and pick up their students. This is a behavior center for primarily autistic kids. And first of all, we can't really, depending on their level of autism, a lot of the students, you can't just pull up, whether it's on Lincoln itself or in the site, open the door and let your son or daughter out, and then trust them to walk into the building into the right spot. They need, most of them need more help or direction as part of that process. So the reality is, parents are going to have to come in the site, park, walk their kids in, just like the daycare center, check their kids in, and then they can walk back out into their car and leave, and then come back an hour later. Also, it's not going to be like a school, again, where all the students, or I'm sorry, all the children have the same start time. These are basically scheduled, scheduled sessions for each kid. Because it's, again, the teachers, it's a one-on-one situation. You can't have autism kids, you know, like in a classroom, sorry about that, classroom setting. So it's basically one-on-one. So the parent will come in, hand it to the particular counselor. They take them and do whatever they need to do in terms of their behavior treatments, and then they'll be done, and then the parent will come back and pick them up. So, you know, some will be started at the beginning of the hour, you know, quarter hour, half hour. You know, so the spread, the times that they come and go are spread out.
Okay, so it's not, I hear that. So the length of time of a typical visit is one hour? Is three hours, okay. And there will be constant traffic flow all day long during operation hours?
No, I mean, basically, once every three hours for each different...
So is there only ability to, to serve one client at a time?
So, no, there's, there's opportunities to serve more than one child. There will be more than one child at a time in the facility. I think Steve was referencing that the pickup-drop-offs can be pre-scheduled, that can be staggered based upon what's needed or what's required to manage that traffic flow. But yes, like the minimum time visit is three hours. It can be all day depending on the services that's required. I don't know off the top of my head the capacity of how many, the maximum children that would be serviced or supported at this facility, but we're not talking more than 15, 10 or 15.
Thank you. Other questions? I'm looking over here, and then I'll get back to the site, anything? Trustee Iverson, go ahead.
Thank you, counselor. The, the, the project is complicated. So we've got a restaurant, and then we have the behavior center. And then that's the plaza, correct? And then retail, and then the apartments. I've, of course, seen everything, and I think it's a, it's an exciting project. My question is with regards to the timeline, which has been an issue. And during the last planning commission meeting, it was resolved at, at, at five years. And you have discussed that, but I just wanted to clarify the point, or to ask you perhaps to clarify it. The, the timing is related to the complexity of the parts. We've got two, we've got two, not zones, but you've got it subdivided. And the five-year, just a little bit more on why five years is necessary to make this work, if you would, please.
Yeah.
Hi, I'll jump in since I'm a part of the five years. So essentially, from an architectural standpoint, we wait to produce some of the most complicated documents until after receiving the thumbs up from, from this board. And so specifically related to the L-shaped building on the south, the multifamily mixed-use building, we have not started the process of construction documents. We have not engaged mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers. We've not engaged structural engineers. All of that begins after we get the go-ahead. And so from the time you guys say go, we need every bit of six months given to get to the stage where we have a stack of construction documents that are ready to be issued for permits to the village. Once we get in for permitting, you know, that process is a bit of a back-and-forth typically with the building department, but it's, you know, three, four, or five months, really in that range, until we would have a permanent hand. Simultaneously, we would be, again, going back to IDOT, back to MWRD for the permits that we just discussed. And so there's a lot of uncertainty in exactly the point at which we would say this building is ready to start construction. But likely from today, you know, it would certainly not be in less than 18 months, I think, that we would have all of those permits ready and have shovels in the ground. And so I think that, you know, we're saying from that point on, you factor a two-year construction schedule, that would get you to three and a half years. Add on, you know, a more conservative approach, you know, going back to what Tyler referred to with a lot of the unknowns and uncertainties in the market, sourcing things. It takes forever to get a transformer today. We find out, you know, we find a lot of times that that's the first thing that needs to be ordered, a transformer, because it can be more than two years sometimes until it actually arrives on site. So I think all of that is just to add a little bit more color to people who, you know, maybe you don't have to kind of deal with this process every day. I think we are all very invested in making sure that this project gets executed. Everybody's standing here. And so, but the last thing that we want to offer up is false promises and how quickly that can happen. And so I think it's really, the conversation at Plan Commission was a very good and honest conversation in that they recognized that we wanted to be able to actually deliver on what was agreed to.
Thank you.
Trustee Schechter.
I just want to get back to the concern that trustee Lissa Levy brought up about traffic. I mean, this is an extremely dense trio of projects on a small piece of land, which also has to be very central. And I can attest already that that, that little strip between Oakton on Lincoln, between Oakton and I guess where, where it turns off, not where it breaks off at Nile Center is, is really, it's, it's really dense. So when you did, and maybe that's the village or, or your team, when you did a traffic study, did you look at different hours in the day? I mean, sometimes, or did you just average? I'm more concerned about certain parts of the day that are more intense and when those are. I mean, when we already have all kinds of commercial businesses here.
Yes, we looked at basically the, the two peak periods in the morning, the seven to nine AM period, the commuter period, as well as the four to six evening period for the development as a whole. So we did look at, you know, the restaurant probably, you know, doesn't generate as much traffic in the morning. The behavior is more during the course of the day. And obviously, the residential is going to be, we looked at the worst case. We just assumed they were all driving, the people that are going to live there. You know, we know in reality, there's some, the bus lines are nearby as well as they could walk over to the station down the street, but, which is a little bit of a walk. But in terms of the three uses, they're kind of compatible in the way their trip generation kind of occurs, because the restaurant is more at night, the ABC is during, more or less during the day, not on the weekends or in the evenings. And then the residents, you know, they'll come kind of on and off all day, but not in a big concentration like the other uses.
And what about, is another concern, and just, I grew up in Queens in New York, and I grew up as a renter and lived on the 15th floor of an apartment building. So I, you know, so for me, rent, you know, renting in a multifamily building is like things families do, so. But it's interesting, so now my mother, she downsized, she's in Evanston now. And she is with, and it turns out there are a lot of Evanston, there are a lot of Northwestern grad students there, and they get tons and tons of packages. And in fact, my mom, my 85-year-old mom just, you know, last year helped somebody who literally had an avalanche of packages fall on her in the package room. So this is top of mind for me, thinking about what accommodations have you made around package delivery and, and things like Grubhub and things that we know a lot of young people take advantage of?
Yeah, so there's actually a loading space, and I'm wondering how to get, I guess, right there, that striped space is specifically designated for exactly what you're describing. A truck can come park in that space for a delivery. And they can actually come in right here through the back door of the residential building. And then there's a package room right there in that triangular space as well as the mailroom. And so all of that can happen without somebody needing to pull over on Lincoln or clog up any traffic. And so I, I think that, you know, we, we agree. We think that package rooms are really essential for the modern-day multifamily building, and so we've been pretty intentional about that.
I just had one, I'm sorry, one last question. What comments have you heard from neighboring businesses?
So, you know, this has been a long process for us. I mean, we started this process back in May 2024. Worked closely with Ms. Knighton and her team. And that was one of the first conversations that she had with us before we even could get to Plan Commission, the first time around in May, was you need to talk to your neighbors and get their input and feedback on this proper project. So Paul, before the first Plan Commission, went to every neighbor, every business, and got their support and their support for this project. The theater was a little bit of a tougher nut to crack for the reasons that kind of been explained here, that a lot of it's been used as an unsanctioned parking lot. But, you know, Paul and Katie, who designed the artwork, they worked closely with Wendy. She showed up the first couple of meetings, and we worked hard and came to a solution that we were all happy with, which was the art walk and making sure that they had access to the valet. So to answer your question, the feedback and reception that we received from the neighbors has been unanimously receptive and excited about kind of the spillover business that this project can bring to them.
Trustee Kamani Levy.
Sorry, it's just a quick follow-up, I'm sorry. The farmer's market, what will the impact be on the farmer's market?
I, I don't know, I don't know that that's an appropriate question for the petitioner.
That's not up to them.
That's not up to them.
Maybe for, for us, what, what will be in terms of parking?
That's a good question with regard to...
So I think there will be additional walkers to the market, you know, people that are living in the apartment building. As far as parking, there's several lots in the area where people can, customers to the farmer's market can park. It's, that lot has not always been available for the farmer's market. And so it's been very convenient for a period of time, but it hasn't always been there. And the market has been there for a long, long time.
Trustee Kamani Levy.
I don't know if this is an entirely appropriate question, but how did this project come to partner with ABC? I, I did some Googling, and, and I'm wondering, like, why this specific organization? And were there other alternatives? Was there another business that could have been part of this project?
Well, I'll answer the first question, and then I'm going to probably turn over to the developers to answer other, the question about other possibilities. But ABC does have a location in Lincolnwood, on Lincoln. They're busting at the seams, like they can't handle their business. So ABC looked at this location. It has a lot of synergy with Will's Place across the street, having similar missions and goals. So, you know, ABC chose this location, given its proximity to its Lincolnwood location, the demand for its services and their market research for the demand for their services in this area, as well as the kind of compatibility with, say, Will's Place across the street. You have Albright Therapies down the road, a little bit on Lincoln. There's a lot of that kind of synergistic entities also around it. Not to mention, you know, Skokie, this is a great location. They'd love to be here. So I think...
Yes, trustee Pierce Slevin.
I might be missing it, so I apologize. Where's parking for residents?
So the parking for the residents would be partially in the surface lot behind the residential building. And then, correct, and then also at the base of the residential building. So this, this darker gray area represents area that is covered by a building above. So it would be essentially in the first floor of their...
And you were counting on one parking space per...
Yes, yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Thank you. Great, I think it's a great project. I think, you know, it could definitely potentially add more vibrancy to downtown Skokie. The question is, I know there's a retail option and a restaurant option. What's the vision there? Or have we already solidified partners in those spaces?
So, like you mentioned, there's the, about 1,750 square foot retail use that's at the base of the mixed-use building, and then there's the restaurant. So the restaurant was an evolving concept. It was something that when we, when we worked on with staff, they said, we need a different anchor for this area. Paul, he's in the restaurant business, has a long history with restaurants, and he's developed this concept of AVI. So we have solidified the, the restaurant user. That will be, you know, as a conditions identified. have solidified the restaurant user. That will be, you know, as a conditions identified. That's going to be opening within six, nine months of ABC. It's going to be like a high-end Mediterranean restaurant. Do we have, I'm not sure how we got this photo when we said we didn't have any others, but do we have any of the interior photos? But to answer your question, we do have a restaurant in place, ready to go, to be opened pretty in short order.
And the retail?
The retail, no. I mean, that, like we talked about before, that's on, you know, a five, a potential three to five-year construction timeline. So once we get further along in that, when, you know, once we're clear on when we can be, get a certificate of occupancy on that building, then we'll be marketing for the tenant. But right now, we're kind of anticipating a coffee-cafe type use.
Other questions, comments? Trustee Iverson.
Yeah, I, your, the, I was happy that trustee Schechter asked about, about the neighbors, because I was, I've been pleased at the, I am a neighbor, actually, right across the street. And I was pleased at the way I've seen people react and to what you're, what you're planning. Wendy, from the Skokie Theater, of course, was initially upset. And your, your ability to convert her into a fan, into somebody excited about what you're doing, was really, you know, very, very encouraging. With regards to traffic, this is not a question, it's another statement, so sorry for that. But traffic was considered at length at two planning meetings. And, and again, living where I live and working where I work, I'm very familiar with the traffic. I feel that the planning commission has done a good job of making plans for the traffic. So I'm excited to see people, instead of driving through town on Lincoln and not stopping anywhere, stopping there. I think that's a good thing. It's a revenue opportunity for the village, and it's an attractive development, and I think you've done a nice job.
We really thank you for that comment.
I have a question, please. One of the conditions is that, and you alluded to it a moment ago, Mr. Manik, is that the restaurant is required to be operating within nine months of receiving.
ABC receiving a certificate of.
Right, certificate of occupancy for ABC. So I'm curious, does ABC, have they been informed of this condition? Do they understand? I know there's, you know, certainly will be a good faith attempt to meet, meet it, but, you know, we've talked about delays and what have you in relation to the residential. What about that component?
Yes, they have been made aware of it. I mean, we share, they're anxious, you know, as I mentioned before, it's been a year and a half process where we've been talking to them about, we're doing this project, we're doing this project, you're coming along. So they've been anxiously following our path to get to today, which of course, to show our progress, we've been sharing staff reports, sharing, you know, the meeting minutes that we have on this meeting. So they are aware of that. And yes, we have made them aware. The one thing about the EVI location is, we would be going in for permit at the same exact time. It is, it is a very nice restaurant, but in comparison to the residential building that we're more worried about the timeline, it's a more simple, straightforward build that Paul, who's had restaurants in Skokie for a long time, like, he knows the restaurant business inside and out, to be able to effectuate that with confidence in that timeline.
Thank you. Okay, one more, and then we're going to put it to the audience.
Yeah, we included in our board packet was a public commenter who had a list of questions, and I just wanted to ask the, I think this is more for the Village, the final question number five here was, since this is a planned development and the Village per definition is allowed to seek, quote, reasonable concessions, were any concessions sought by the Village? And if not, why not?
So that would be a concession, the nine-month timeframe?
Oh, the conditions.
The conditions, the conditions.
What are sort of things that we asked the developer to do as conditions?
Well, those are in the conditions.
Yeah, those are outlined.
Right. They're outlined in the conditions.
Yeah, I mean, we would certainly love it if there's no conditions, but, you know, those conditions, you know, are kind of really, are the concessions we made. We did do the art walk was another kind of concession that the peerage review asked us to do, the work with the theater. And we do have, we created this flex space between there that's, you know, that we're going to be made available for any public events with that special events license. That's listed in the conditions in case, you know, you talked about the farmer's market, if there's a spillover, there's an opportunity there to start using that as well. So we've made public space as well as for, you know, whether in the flex space or the art walk. And Johanna's standing here, and she can answer.
So I would just offer that when we speak to things that the Village or community requests in a planned development process, they need to be proportionate to the relief, any relief or, or development sought. There's not a perfect test of that. It's not like a, you can't compare the two cups. But when we ask for conditions and performance expectations, that was part of that. But there's not really significant relief. We're asking for, they're asking for half a foot on parking spaces, a smaller drive-by to circulate around the parking lot. So they're, they're generally keeping the, the size of the development proportionate to what you would expect in this district, in the mixed-use district.
May I ask Ms. Knighton a quick?
Sure, go ahead. Yep, absolutely.
Ms. Knighton, thank you for being there, and thank again everybody for being here. I am wondering just about the strength and the feasibility of this being a successful venture. I know there is some concern. Right down the street, we got a project that's not complete. You know, that's another concern for this particular project. And I'm just wondering, what are the factors or the, I'll use the conditions to ensure that we're not on the hook as a village on this project, if it doesn't come to fruition?
So first, I think there have been some questions at various intervals of financial assistance from the Village. Just to make it clear for everybody listening and watching, there is no, no Village assistance in this project, no financial contributions. There's only land entitlement requests. So that's, that's the first, first piece of this. The second piece is, we've done our best to add conditions, working with corporation council, working with the planning staff, working with the developer, to put conditions in place and performance expectations as to when things are supposed to happen. They're asking for a special use from the Village, and we're asking them to perform in a timely manner. We're, we are sensitive, we have heard, our economic vitality staff has heard from businesses that they are very concerned about the disruption of construction anywhere, everywhere in the downtown, whether it's a small roadway project, or it's a, it's a large development. The loss of parking on the street, construction vehicles, all that is hard, it's always hard to live with, live with construction. So making sure that that is done in a timely manner is important, and making sure that before work is done, that, that proper financing is in place and working. Well, we cannot regulate that as the Village through our regular zoning process. If there's conditions and other things that we want to put in place, those are, those are afforded to us in this process.
Okay, we'll open it up to comments from the community. We will have time for up to five speakers, three minutes each.
Hi, Rita Luce, resident of Skokie.
I'm sorry, Ms. Luce, would you kindly go to the microphone?
Yes.
Yeah, we want to make sure to get you. Thank you.
Rita Luce, resident of Skokie, fan of Skokie. I have some questions for you guys. Is that all right?
The questions will be for the board. Actually, address the board.
Okay, thank you. How many low-income units will there be in this residential building?
So it was already, it was in the paperwork, there are.
I don't have that paperwork.
Three. Three. Thank you, trustee Schechter. One is a three-bedroom.
One is a one-bedroom.
One-bedroom, two-bedroom.
Three out of 58?
Mm-hmm. And that, just to be clear, they are, they are in compliance with the ordinance.
That's as a conforming?
Yes.
Okay. And then, is, is the weight on IDOT, is that for the residential unit, or is that for the restaurant?
Residential, as I understood it. I'm looking at Mr. Manik. Yes, it's for.
So, so will the restaurant and the part that's in the bank building, will that go in first?
Yes. That's what's planned.
And that will, so that will not take five years?
No.
What's the timeline on that?
So you've indicated you can get.
I heard nine months, but.
Building permits?
Well, building permits, and then nine months opening after we get the building permit, we apply for building permits right away.
So the way the condition is laid out is that once they have certificate of occupancy for action behavior centers, the clock starts ticking, and the restaurant must open within nine months?
And, and how much of the building will the ABC occupy? What square footage is that?
That I'm going to defer to the developer.
6,900.
6,900 square feet.
Percentage of the building? Sorry.
About 70%.
70%.
Then 30% will be the restaurant?
Yes. That's what they're saying.
Okay. All right, great. Then.
Thirty-five seconds.
Again, sure, okay. So a lot of this seems like, there's a lot of unique things. There's a lot of square peg, round hole stuff going on here, a lot of variances, a lot of issues with IDOT, a lot of things. And I am just concerned that this site may not be like a great fit for this apartment building, the whole thing. There's a lot of issues, the traffic.
Thank you, Ms. Luce. Your, your time is up, but thank you. Mr. Dalca.
Good evening. David Dalca, representing 9330 Laurel. I'd first like to thank each trustee that asked very critical questions about this very ill-conceived, not very well-thought-out project. I'm here to ask for each one of you, each and every one of you, to vote no on this item for the following reasons. That piece of Lincoln Avenue is, if you were to take a survey of Skokie residents and ask, what are some of the most bottleneck traffic areas in the Village? They would name this corner and that block north and south of Oakton on Lincoln Avenue. And this is a time where I'm going to support the village management team and ask for their help. When the city of Chicago does something like this, the developer puts money in escrow and allows the village management team to hire a proper, independent third party, not some random guy who's here to say what the developer wants with his cellphone on, but an actual, relevant, competent, trained, traffic expert to come and look at those things. I would recommend the people that design Schaumburg, because traffic flows there. In addition, that traffic issue has to do with the fact that predating all of you, a different group of trustees and a different mayor made a very poor decision in locating our police department and fire department main headquarters south of this location. This is a main thoroughfare for emergency vehicles, and I can't remember the last time I drove through this, and I drive through it very frequently right now, that I got through driving northbound on Lincoln in one stoplight cycle. I think we need to put a pause on this project and have those proper traffic studies done. And I ask for somebody to please introduce a motion to pause a vote on this tonight until we can do a proper traffic study. Furthermore, I echo the sentiments of the woman before me who said there's too many, when you ask for exceptions, you're going to ask for more exceptions. These people are going to be backed to ask for more exceptions for this project. It's, 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 it's a problem. And lastly, when you hear the word valet parking, it means that there's enough parking in the plan, and there's going to be cars in the street. I was recently at a hotel in downtown Chicago for an event, and they had so few valet parkers that I was in the street five deep. I beg you all to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalca. Ms. Polka.
Hi, I'm Still Kimberly Polka. Didn't write anything tonight, and I feel like I might be throwing somebody in the room under the bus, and that is not my intention. But considering what we saw with, what I said I was never going to talk about again, with Carvana, and then the hotel, and this is from a court document. PNC argued that Deeter was not entitled to a discharge because he engaged in a continuing course of actions in which he intentionally concealed his income and assets in order to defraud his creditors, failed to produce required financial information, and knowingly and fraudulently made false oaths and accounts in connection with his financial situation. After conducting an evidentiary hearing, the court found, given the documentary evidence and testimony at trial, that the contributions made by his businesses, they basically say that what PNC was arguing was right. That is this developer. I am worried that this project, I, your, your question was the best to me. How do we know it's going to come to fruition? We don't need something else to start, and they can't get the financing. I could talk about affordable housing, I could talk about other things, and I could also talk about how I'm really happy that they went to the theater and made nice with them, and the art walk looks beautiful. There are things I want to like about this project, but if we have another thing start that can't be finished, it doesn't matter what the drawings look like. It doesn't matter if I think it's pretty or not pretty for that corner. It doesn't matter that I don't, that I'm disappointed that it seems to be the bare minimum, even if there is a three-bedroom for the affordable housing. None of that matters. And it doesn't matter that for the first time in this room, I might be agreeing with a lot of what David Dalca said, in that this is a bottleneck. And I have been to downtown Chicago where there is valet parking, and I think it's very kind to offer to share it with the restaurant. But I go valet park my car in Chicago, and I'm waiting 20 minutes for it to come back, because they've gone and parked it 17 blocks away, because there's no parking. I also urge you to vote no. I urge you to maybe ask them to put money in escrow and do what Mr. Dalca suggested, and get an independent person to evaluate the traffic. Once it's, once we've said aye, 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 it's done for us.
Thank you, Ms. Polka. Mr. Coplo.
Hello, Mike Coplo, Skokie resident, registered voter. Yeah, I was also concerned about, about the valet parking, so I'm not going to talk about that. But it's kind of related to the valet parking. I'm not sure which, whether this is just my own eccentricity or whether there's any actual relevance here. But this all seems very high-end, but, you know, which is something I'm not really used to, and it kind of rubs me the wrong way, which doesn't really matter. But I'm just concerned that Skokie is going to become just another North Shore suburb.
Thank you, Mr. Coplo. Mr. Saganek.
This is my second time here. As I already told you, I'm a part of Economic Development Committee here in Skokie. And as an economic development commissioner, I'm going to say a couple of things. Number one, I love it. That's number one. And here's the reason why. The reason why is that, you know, we have developers, we're going to come back to that issue. We have developers who are willing to take a dilapidated part of Skokie, which is actually, which looks like, looks horrible. Let me put it this way. And they're willing to. to take it and build it into something that looks really nice, that's going to actually bring a lot of younger people to Skokie, is going to bring people, and I, I agree that we need more single fam, um, studio units, and we need one-bedroom units, because these units are cheaper, they're going to bring younger people, younger people are going to revitalize that part of downtown, which we so badly need, okay? So, this is great, this is great. What I would recommend to the village, I would recommend, and I, you know, I would recommend that, again, I don't know who these developers are, I have no idea, the first time I met them, but I've been in real estate business for many, many years, and I would recommend, uh, taking a closer look, taking a closer look at financials, understand if whatever they say they can do, they will deliver. I mean, and if they can deliver, this is the best possible thing that would happen to Skokie in a while, because every time I see a building crane in Skokie, I get excited, okay? So, uh, this is a nice development, I want to see it, you know, happen, I want to, I want to get to fruition, and I want to see these younger people bringing a lot of energy to our, I'm sorry, guys, but we have a horrible downtown, horrible, and I want to see the downtown to be revitalized based on projects like this one. But first, I want to be sure that the developers are actually able to deliver what they say they can.
Thank you, Mr. Saganik. I, um, thank you, and that closes public comment. I am going to follow up on a couple of things. I want to be clear, Mr. Saganik was speaking for himself, not for the Economic Development Commission. I also take great exception to your characterization of our downtown is horrible. Our downtown is not horrible. We have many viable, successful, family-owned businesses in our downtown, so I would ask you to, in the future, please reconsider characterizing any area of our community as horrible. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. All right, that's, no, no need, public comment is closed. Thank you. So... I have trouble supporting this development. I want to, but I have trouble supporting it. I believe that the petitioner is requesting extraordinary relief to fit something in that is not in approved use, especially in a prime retail location in our downtown. There are numerous other locations in Skokie. I'm not talking about the restaurant, I'm not talking about the residential, I'm talking about the, uh, the proportional exception, exceptional use for the Action Behavior Center. Over the past five months, as we've talked about a couple times tonight, we have heard, through the strategic plan process, we've heard loudly and clearly from the community that they are looking for, and this is no surprise, they are looking for bold vibrancy in our downtown, and I'm concerned that this development, especially this prime retail parcel, does not further or support that vision. That said, I do have, you know, there are conditions, I will say, I'm going to go on record as saying I was disappointed that the Plan Commission chose to give the petitioner five years, I think that is too long. I've heard what they've said, but I believe that is too long. So, what I would propose is an amend, I'm sorry?
Is there a motion on the table?
Well, there's no motion on the table. Okay, so we need a mo, I have a proposal, but first we need a motion and a second. So, is there a motion to concur? Yeah, there's, we're going to start, we're going to take them one at a time, and we're going to start with the site plan approval. So, is there a motion to concur, to concur with the Plan Commission recommendations for twenty forty, twenty twenty-five dash oh-four P site plan approval? Is there a motion to concur? Moved by trustee Iverson. Is there a second? Second by trustee Pierce Slogan. So, here is the, the additional condition that I would like to, it's, uh, recommend, that no building permits or occupancy permits will be issued for the site until the developer demonstrates to the satisfaction of the village through the production of such documents as the village may require, that the developer has the financial means, including securing all, all construction financing, to not only commence construction of the development, but also to complete construction of the development within three years of the date of adoption of this ordinance. They already have relationships in place with IDOT. I believe that three years in terms of what is needed in our community is generous. So, I would propose that as an additional condition.
What do we have to do?
Yeah, so barbed with process.
You could do some clarification. So, we would have to have a motion to amend, um, the Plan Commission, uh, conditions, recommendations, and we would have to vote on the amendment first?
So, is there a motion to accept the amendment? Or the condition?
Is there an additional one you want to?
Yeah, well, then there's, there's an additional one, an amendment to what's condition number seven in the paperwork, and that would be that the development shall be completed and ready for the issuance of occupancy permits within three years of the date of adoption of this ordinance. So, that's, that's pertaining to the residential only, the residential and commercial building only.
Are the two amendments now tied together? We can do them separately, or we can do them tied together?
I say we separate them. Okay, so the first one about the, I'll read it again, no building permits or occupancy permits will be issued for the site until the developer demonstrates to the satisfaction of the village through the production of such, such documents as the village may require, that the developer has the financial means, including securing all construction financing, to not only commence construction of the development, but also to complete construction of the development within three years of the date of adoption of this ordinance.
Can I ask a question about it?
Ms. Nusir?
Is there a deadline for that?
So, I believe that there's no deadline per se, but if they want to get their building and occupancy permits done, they have, before you can give them their permits or apply for the permits, they have to show financial.
But it obligates, that site is now spoken for, it's obligated. You know what I mean, like, even, you know, during, things are in limbo, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
So, they've received a conditional, there will be no more public comments, they've received a conditional approval.
And it seems to me there ought to be a, a deadline for what you're proposing, just by which date?
No, no, no.
Because this isn't, no.
So, we could put a date in there, if you so...
What would make sense?
I don't know, a matter of...
Six months?
A hundred and eighty days.
Our code says that if you do not undertake work on a project, then, a hundred and eighty days, I think it's a hundred and eighty days, then your approvals do, go away, you don't have, you don't hold them.
Okay.
So, I would consider if there's no work undertaken, in the spirit of code that was already on the books with the village, you have that protection.
Okay, is that satisfactory?
I guess, and voting, voting for this doesn't necessarily...
We can still vote, we can, it can still be voted up or down. This is just to, to put this additional condition, so that if it is approved, it stands with this condition.
Okay, so you, as the motion maker, do you accept the additional language?
I didn't make the, I didn't make the motion. Who made the motion? Trustee Iverson?
Who, the motion to amend.
The motion to confer was Iverson or Pierce Slogan?
So, I am suggesting this commission, or this, this condition, okay. But I, so I guess I am moving if I can legally do that.
Yes.
Okay, so I am moving, is there a second?
So, again, moving to amend the Plan Commission recommendations in the original motion with the language that you read?
Yes.
And the additional language from trustee Schechter, to be done within six months?
Well, the code already gives us that protection, so I don't know if we need anything additional with the code already, the code already provides that.
So, you're dropping?
No, no, that, well, that...
No, it's already there, it's in the code, okay.
Okay. Trustee Iverson?
Just, um, actually, the last planning meeting for, for this project was during the government shutdown, and of course, that raised a lot of fears with regards to timelines. So, my, my question with regards to the three years is, given the possibility that unusual things can happen, that will affect the timeline, that three years, what, what is the process of the opportunity to adjust that three years if something, something, uh, uh, will of God sort of thing happens?
So, in the past, there have been previous developments that have run into issues of supply chain problems, and they have requested an extension from this board, and you recently given an extension.
Right.
So, that's a possibility as well. But they had to demonstrate why they needed such the extension.
Okay, so, I proposed two conditions.
Please, one, we separated.
One, or, we separated them, sorry. I've proposed a condition, is there, I've moved it, is there a second to that condition? Trustee Schechter, thank you. Trustee Schechter, okay.
Again, so there has to be a vote on the amendment?
Right. So, there has to be a vote on the amendment.
Can you read the amendment?
Sure. That no building permits or occupancy permits will be issued for the site until the developer demonstrates to the satisfaction of the village through the production of such documents as the village may require, that the developer has the financial means, including securing all construction financing, to not only commence construction of the development, but also to complete construction of the development within three years of the date of adoption of this ordinance. So, this is requiring that they show us that they have their capital stack to complete the entire project before they start, they, before they get any permits, building or occupancy permits. Will the clerk call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Slogan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Okay, so now we vote on the...
So, now you wrote on the original motion, which is the motion to concur with the Plan Commission recommendations as amended?
As amended. Okay, and that motion was made by...
Didn't you have the second amendment?
Yeah, but we're going to, we'll get to that later.
We separated.
We separated them. Okay, so do we vote on that now?
We need to vote on the second.
Okay, so the amendment to condition number seven, which is found, I want to be real specific about this, it's, so it's, it's on page seven of twelve.
It's, it's condition number seven, page four of twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, thank you. So, it's at the bottom of page four. The residential, and this is how it reads before amended, it reads, "The residential portion of the project must be constructed, and certificates of occupancy must be issued within five years, sixty months, six zero months of village board approval on, it would be today's date, or the certificate of occupancy is revoked, and Action Behavior Center must leave." So, what I am proposing is that the development shall be completed and ready for the issuance of occupancy permits, permits, within three years of the date of adoption of this ordinance. So, it tightens up their timeframe, so they no longer have sixty, sixty months, or five years, they have three, they have thirty-six months. So, that's my motion for the second one, is it, for the second amendment. Is there, is there a second? Thank you, trustee Iverson. Will the clerk please call the roll? Is there confusion? I want to make sure that there's, okay, okay. Because we can't have three years one place and have five years another place if it is approved. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Slogan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay.
Now...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going anywhere with process, she's got a guide.
Motion to concur with the original motion as amended?
As amended. Okay, so, as twice amended. So, that's what we're voting on, we're voting on the motion to approve either yes or no, a or nay, a or nay.
And this is strictly for the site plan approval?
This is only for the site plan. So, it's the plant, concur with the Plan Commission's recommendation, but with the two additional conditions. Well, I think we already have, we already have a motion and a second on the table, right? And will the clerk please remind us who moved and seconded?
Trustee Pierce, um, Iverson and Pierce Slogan.
Okay, trustee Iverson made the motion, and trustee Pierce Slogan seconded. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Slogan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
An emphatic no.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Nay.
Trustee Robinson?
Nay.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
The motion fails. So...
So, with regard to that, because the subdivision in case, um, twenty twenty-five oh-five P and the special use, which is for a proportionate exception, both in twenty, twenty twenty-five twenty P are both dependent on the site plan approval, these two cases and the votes for these two cases are now moved as they are not applicable anymore since the site plan approval failed.
Okay.
Okay.
My, uh, there's three cases tonight.
Right, we'll wait just a moment for the room to clear. Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have three more cases before the board, and they're all related. This is for, um, site plan approval at fifty-three sixty-two A Avenue, case number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven P, site plan approval, case number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight P, special use permit, excuse me, two, two, um, cases, at fifty-three sixty-two A Avenue. At the May fifteenth meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed the request to McDonald's USA LLC for site plan approval to demolish and reconstruct the existing McDonald's restaurant at fifty-three sixty-two A Avenue, along with a special use permit to allow two drive-through lanes. The request for site plan approval and special use permit at fifty-three sixty-two A Avenue located, is located in a B-three business zoning district were both approved by a vote of six ayes, uh, zero nays, and two members absent. The proposed rebuild of the restaurant is designed, is designed to better accommodate McDonald's expanding digital operations and to improve traffic flow at the site. The project also incorporates several substantial, sustainability measures, and aims to lower carbon emissions by reducing energy use and selecting more envi- envi- excuse me, environmentally conscious materials with the goal of meeting lead-zero carbon standards. Planned features include energy-efficient building systems, an upgraded building envelope, onsite solar panels, and lower-carbon construction materials. Commissioners asked for clarification on the post-site... Commissioners asked for clarification on the proposed site changes, specifically the removal of these, of the southern right-in, right-out access onto Niles Center Road. Staff explained that the access on 2E Avenue will remain the same, and the Niles Center Road southern right-of-way and out driveway will be removed, while the northern driveway will stay in place. Legal notice was properly posted, no one came forward to speak. Again, the Plan Commission voted with seven members voting aye, with two members absent. That was vote to approve.
Thank you. Uh, are there questions for Mr. Luke or the petitioner? Okay, there being none, any comments from the community?
We all know how I first came to these board meetings, and I'm looking at a lot of glass on that finished storefront. Is it going to be bird-friendly? Thank you, that's all.
Mr., Mr. Dalka.
Good evening, David Dalka, 9330, rural. Our family is a frequent visitor to the Chick-fil-A on Skokie Boulevard. That one, as you may know, also has a double drive-through. I find that design to be a major public safety hazard, um, because you now have two lanes of traffic coming with, with those things that are there. It's, it's more difficult to cross it, uh, and it, it, um, it, it leads to some, I've also seen people jockey from lane to lane, uh, you know, in situations like that. So, you know, my, my question is, um, about that. The, the other question I'd have for the trustees would be, um, there's a lot of, if we do some research across the United States, there's a lot of villages that have gone out of their way to make McDonald's a little less McDonald's-like, for lack of a better word, to make it a little bit more friendly, better landscaping, better hiding, better things like that, and, you know, I'm, but I mostly object to a double drive-through because I think it creates, uh, a serious public safety hazard. I've almost been hit twice at the Chick-fil-A myself, uh, do that design, so I, I ask for people to, I'd ask for the mayor to consider amending that, uh, for, for the purposes of that and to potentially vote against that if that's, that's there. I'd also like to remind all the trustees that the village will met recently downvoted a, uh, a McDonald's in a drive-through, I don't think this is affected by residents, but I think the sentiment of our neighbors should be considered. Um, and, um, you know, that, that doesn't personally affect me because I've made different dietary choices, but I'd still care about the safety of each and every Skokie resident and staff member that might happen to go there for lunch.
Thank you, Mr. Dalka. Any other comments from the community? Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, being none, will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was a motion. Forgive me. Is there, there's two different motions. So the first thing we need, I'm sorry, is there a motion to concur with Plan Commission case 2025-7P site plan approval? Is there a motion to approve? Trustee Pierce Slogan, second by Trustee Lissa Levy. Questions, comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Slogan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
The motion passes. Now, for the second component, is there a motion to concur with Plan Commission case 2025-08P special use permit? Motion to concur? Trustee Lissa Levy, is there a second? Trustee Iverson, I'm looking at you, you woke up first, okay. Uh, any questions, comments? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Slogan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Chairman Luke, appreciate it. Okay, the last item on our agenda before we adjourn to, we'll move to closed session to, and then we will adjourn from closed session. The last item is public comments. Is there anyone who did not address the board during the first open public comment period who would like to address the village board at this time? And I believe this is your first time addressing us.
Yes, yes.
So all we need is your first and last name, and you will have three minutes.
Sure. My name is Dr. Cameron Forgoney. I'm in Skokie. We were talking about the, the costs and expenses that we have and hope to be more efficient. I, I believe we can, as a, as a person who is in, um, building operations and making streamlined to operations and have lean operations, have you implemented or looked into bringing AI into your operations? Right now, everything is operate like 20, 30 years ago, uh, like when you want to talk about a tree who is falling, you call, you wait, they connect you to public work, you don't have any log. When you made a call, you don't have any tracking, everything is old pen and paper. Maybe if we move, bringing new technologies, implementing AI, the village can cost a lot of, say, a lot of staff and positions that it requires for, you know, the old way of doing things. If it was a question or a suggestion to look into that area too? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting to, to this late hour to address us, we appreciate that.
Awesome idea.
Yeah, thank you. We have been talking about it. Okay, a motion is in order to move to closed session and adjourn therefrom. Is there a motion? Trustee Lissa Levy, is there a second trustee? The Levis, the trustees Levy have it. Um, will the clerk, will the, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Slogan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.